You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome to the Boss Harker Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 163 of East Central Indiana's five favorite podcast. I'm Jeremiah Moore. Today I'm joined by producer Chris Guffey and co-host Zach Bircham today.
Hi.
Dakota is off being a first responder, saving all of us. He's a, he's a substation maintenance guy. And if it wasn't for Dakota and the work that he does, we would all be in 95 degree houses right now. And we wouldn't have electricity. So
God bless you, Dakota.
Thank you, Dakota, for doing what you do. We made it to three years together, every single episode, Dakota and I, but he's out there being a hero today. So we're, we're gonna power through without him. So to speak powering through. So with that, this is going to be the, the third and final episode in our candidate series today. I'm going to be joined by, from left to right on your screen, my right to left, so I'll try to do the best I can with that. Councilman Clay Morgan is, is here repping his MVP barber shop shirt. Betsy Mills, our newest county council person is, is here. Of course, you guys know Zach, he's not, he's not running for anything. He's just here to help me keep the, keep the train on the tracks. Travis Lyle is the, the first challenger in the race on the Republican ticket. So we welcome Travis. And then Harold Griffin is down here on the end. And Harold is serving, but I don't know what term, how many terms are you in?
Four.
Four.
Going for five.
Man, it's like a drive for five. This is like,
That'll hopefully be it.
What's the record? Do you know, is there a record?
Oh, yeah. I don't know. Mike Thals, I think ran six or seven.
Mike Thals was up there and so was
Dick Bouslog.
Dick Bouslog was, went all the way back to, to the late seventies, right? Yeah.
Forty years.
You're just half a Dick Bouslogs. You've got a lot of work to do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just getting started. Just getting started. So we are excited to be here doing the, doing this series. It's, it's meant a lot to have the support of the community and folks that, that, that hang out with us, watch us every week, and especially during the, during the candidate series. Third year in a row, we've had the chance to do this. We've done it for the 2016, all of the races in 2016. It lasted about two months. Last year, we did it for the entire city council, rate, all of the contested races in the Newcastle City Council. And then this year, we've kind of crammed it in at the last minute with the, with the COVID situation. We've had to work, work this program in, in just, in just three episodes. So there are a few races that we would have liked to have gotten in, but unfortunately we were unable to, basically because the restrictions in, in getting people together in space just weren't quite going to work out. Obviously, you see, it's a, it's a full house tonight, but we're, we're making it work. So with that, I'm going to bring in my co-host for the evening, Zach Bircham, and let you do a little sponsor read, get your, get your appetite right. We're, we're sharing a mic here. We're at max capacity. So here's Zach.
The Boss Harker Liberty Candid Series is sponsored by Wildlands Flowers, 407 South Main Street in Newcastle, or as always, at wildlandflowers.net for a list of flower arrangements and options. Wildlands Flowers offers free flower deliveries in our area, and they're fast. That's who I use. Wildlands is taking every precaution possible to ensure the health and safety of our clients, employees, and partners. Flowers for any occasion, including the weddings of all of our hosts. I can't say that for my wedding. I won't know who did the flowers for my wedding, but Dakota's and Jeremiah's both, and they've been doing contact free delivery before it was cool. So support who supports the show. So it keeps you, keeps everybody informed.
Well, very good. So let's, let's start over on the, on the right side of the screen, left side of the room here with Harold, and we'll just, we'll just start. I'm going to try to make sure that everybody gets, gets time to talk and have a conversation, but just a few minutes or moments to introduce yourself, Harold, your background, how long you, we said 20 years on the council now.
There will be.
Or will be.
If.
If, if, and, if and will. And other elected offices, just how you got to this point, and we'll, we'll just start from there.
Okay. I'll start out the time I got on the sheriff's department back in 1977 under Sheriff Joe Harris. And I started out as a road officer. Then I was promoted to a road sergeant. Then I went to detective sergeant. Then I eventually was nominated, elected sheriff Henry County.
In the, what era was that, like nineties?
That would have been in, from around 95 till about 99, 90. I just ran one term. I would have ran a longer, another term, but I was doing caretaking for my mother who was terminally ill. And I just felt like it was too much to try to deal with. So I just ran that one term and went back as a road sergeant, and later as a juvenile detective. And then went part-time barbering, because my, way back, I was a barber.
That seems to be a requirement to be a county councilperson is barbering.
Yeah, we like to cut it out.
Travis, are you a barber in any way? Gonna have to work on that.
Can't even come on here.
So around, I think it was around 2004, I decided to try running for county council. And fortunately, I've been able to get on the council now for, this is my fourth term. I'm gonna go one more, and that's it. That's about all I can tell you. I'm going to run a fifth term, but this is it.
This is it. You promise.
We've heard promises before, Harold. I'm just saying the man across the table from you.
Zach, you told us you weren't running for council again.
I can't run for council.
All right, Travis, tell us about yourself. You're the, you're the newcomer in the race. So you've got, and you'll want to be close to that mic within about two to three inches of it.
I am the outsider. I have never been in politics before. I've never ran for a public office before. What I am is a taxpayer. I, I see things from the outside, how to handle a dollar, how to handle the financial crunch that's coming. So that's the whole reason I decided to get into politics is because we need somebody that hasn't been in there with a change of ideas. Things, if you like the way things are going, just, just continue to vote the same way you've always voted. That's what I say. Don't look at the party a person runs for. Look at their ideas, the way they voted, their political affiliation means nothing. Vote for the person who represents you the best. So if you like the way things are going in this county, keep voting for that. I just have a different idea. I have an outside way of doing things. And if somebody likes that, I just thought I'd throw my hat in the ring and decide to go for it.
All right. And as far as, what career have you had in, in your time to this point?
I was in telecommunications for about 20 years. I started out with a company called Telemont out of Indianapolis, Indiana, ended up with a company called Velocitale out of Philadelphia, PA. I was a construction manager for them. I oversaw millions of dollars of construction projects, cell towers. That was my main thing. And I was a troubleshooting on cell towers. But I became a construction manager there and oversaw the construction from ground zero till the construction of it. So I understand how the construction of a cell tower in your backyard is a bad thing. Same thing like a windmill. You have to see if it's going to affect not only you, but also your neighbor. People have personal property rights, but how's that going to affect your neighbor? Does a shadow cast a shadow over his home? Is he afraid of the rays that's going to shoot out? So that's the kind of things I dealt with overseeing the cellular towers. So, and also saw project cost, how much it was going to cost for the company. AT&T was our primary, but we also did T-Mobile and Verizon. So.
All right. Very good. Let's, let's shift over to Betsy, and let's learn a little bit about Betsy.
All right. Well, I was born at Ball Memorial, but I grew up in the county. I live on the northernmost road of Henry County and have my entire life. My parents got married there.
You'll want to know that we spent the entire Patreon going back to the lineage of everybody here and how early they got here from Kentucky. So
Not me, not me.
I'm just saying that you already outed yourself as being born in Muncie. That's strike one.
Well, I, oh, yeah. Okay.
Spoken as a guy born in
Delaware County from my front yard.
Spoken as a guy born in St. Lawrence County, New York, and have lost three elections in this county already. I'm just warning you.
I, I went to Shenandoah K through 12. I graduated. While I was a senior at Shenandoah, this is a funny story, and I hope it's okay to tell, tell the story, Harold, but the first campaign I ever worked in, in politics was a 2004 county council campaign for an up-and-comer named Harold Griffin. So it's kind of full circle here. Yeah. Here we are. I met him at a Lincoln Day dinner over at Newcastle High School. And he, he was at our table, and he was so nice to me and my friends from Shenandoah. And I just thought, does he need a volunteer? And I, I don't know how it came up exactly. I don't know if you asked or whatever, but I was like, yeah, I want to, I want to knock doors for that guy.
Zach, doesn't it feel awkward now that Harold's not acknowledging remembering her though?
No.
I'm not worried about that.
She did. She came to me wanting to do the campaigning.
I, I thought Harold was great. I thought Harold was great. And it was an incredible honor to, it's an incredible honor now to serve alongside him and to have had our friendship for a long time. And he's known me since I was in high school. I went to Ball State. I was student body president at Ball State. I stayed for my
Chirp chirp.
Chirp chirp, baby. I stayed for my masters. Immediately, that was when the recession hit. I was offered a job by Penn State to go teach there. So I was at their main campus for seven years, teaching communications. I was home constantly. People who know me were like, are you sure you live in Pennsylvania? Because I was there, I was here so often, visiting family, going to Colts games, you name it. And then finally, a few years ago, I asked for my job to be put permanently online. So I have the same job. I seem to teach in the same department. I visit there four or five times a year. Haven't since before Christmas due to COVID, but
You've pretty much been doing this COVID thing since way before the rest of us have.
Yes.
You've been doing the remote learning.
Yeah. And my, yeah, I've been pretty lucky with that. I just signed a new contract with Penn State this week. So three more years. I'm really pumped about that. And yeah, I, I wanted to come back home for a lot of reasons, some, some personal with my family. But also, I just saw things happening in our county and thought, I sort of had been preparing for this my whole life, my education, my background, the campaigns I've worked. New ideas, new perspectives. I'm, I know I'm a young person, but I think we need younger voices in there. And I'm proud to serve as that. So I won the caucus in January to replace Mike Thals, an incredible public servant. It's an honor to sit in his seat. And so I'm finishing up his term, and I guess it's my term now. It's been a real trial by fire right after, you know, the pandemic happening. I haven't had a training or anything, but I've taught myself a lot, a lot along the way. And I've had a lot of people who've been very good to me. My colleagues on council have been outstanding. And I've learned a lot. And I am asking for another chance at four years, because I think I bring a lot to the table. And I'm very, very proud of what I've accomplished since I have come on the council.
And Councilman Morgan?
Yeah. So back a handful of years ago, I ran for city council at large and got beat. Ran against Vaughn Reed, and who is now a customer of the MVP Barber Shop.
Well, a different Vaughn Reed, not the, the third, the third Vaughn Reed.
Right, the third. Exactly, exactly. And so anyways, yeah, so I got beat then. And actually, at that time, I thought about, so you guys thought this was the first time I thought about not running again. I was actually thought, ah, you know, I tried, you know, which is what you find a lot of people do. They run once. If they lose, they don't ever get involved again. The key is staying involved. So I got, people encouraged me to run again because I did come so close. And they were like, you know, keep going. And actually Dale Cole was the guy, was one of the guys, I'll put it that way, who, who really encouraged me that night, because I went over to Democrat headquarters after, on election night to, you know, congratulate everybody and see everybody, a lot of friends over there. And Dale Cole, before I left, he handed me a piece of paper, and he pointed to the county, county council at large race that was coming the next year. And my wife told me, you know, you might as well try. She said, you never know what you might miss if you don't take the opportunity. And so I did run and then won. And so now I'm running for my third term on the county council.
And the day job for you?
And the day job, yes. MVP Barber Shop. I'm owner operator there at 1990 South Memorial Drive.
All right. Owner operator, you sound like a trucker, honestly.
Well, you know, I try to use a lot of different terminology to reach all the people.
All right. So let's, let's work fantasy football draft.
Audiences, right?
We'll go like this is fantasy football draft, and we'll make this a reverse serpentine and go right back to Clay again and work our way back around here.
Oh, boy.
How do you view the role as county councilperson? You, you've served eight years now, or just about eight years?
Yeah, this is my eighth year. Yeah, yeah.
What would you do in the next term? How do you see the race? And how, what, what do you think makes you uniquely different than the rest of the field? And why, why folks should be saying, hey, I'm going to vote for Clay in the primary and in the fall?
Yeah. Well, one thing, I guess I would, you know, Harold has more experience, but I'm kind of falling in that category more now after serving a couple of terms. So that's one thing I do bring is experience. And, and, and experience is important. It really is, because you do learn a lot of new things at first. And there's things that you, you go into it thinking it should be this way, or it should be this way, or why, why don't they do this? And then when you take on the role and start expressing those opinions and start expressing those views, what you find out is there's quite a few people that agree with you. But because of state statutes, federal statutes, things of that nature, there's some things that you can't change immediately, or you can't do immediately. And it just takes time to work on those things. One thing that, that, so I have a difficult time being a self-promoter, but one thing I can say is I do believe with the new council that members that came on and started serving in 2019, it did seem that a lot of them respected a lot of the things I had to say. And we worked together very well. And when there was questions about some of the history, or some of the, why things were the way they were, I mean, I found that they, they appreciated my, my perspective. And they've learned a lot, and I've learned a lot with them. And so anyways, I guess I bring that, that part is probably one of the biggest things is just the experience of continuing to, to help this, with this new crew, as I'll put it.
And how would you, how would you define the role as a county councilperson? What are your duties or the way you view it?
In, in, in very simple terms, it's the financial, we are, our real sole responsibility is to nurture and to take care of the financial health of the county. That's, that's our number one role above and beyond all things. And there are, the, the majority of county finances, it is up to us to decipher into budget. There are other portions of the county budget, though, that, different departments that we have no control over. It is up to the individual offices.
Those would be the county income taxes, some COAT money, some road funds?
There's just different funds, like there's certain offices that have 4D funds, as they call them. There's certain offices that have some, and I may be using the term incorrectly, but some discretionary funds that kind of come to different offices. Sometimes there's different fees that are collected by different
Building permits and that sort of thing.
Building permits and that sort of thing. Now, there's, there's a lot of building permits that, that they do take into general though, too. I mean, so there's some of those things that come right into general also. And that's a part of, again,
So you get rewarded.
Well, you know, that's one thing you learn, though, is there are certain things like that where you would think a certain department is able to produce a certain fund, okay, to help with their office, you would think. But sometimes it's, sometimes the money they bring into the office actually goes into the general fund, and they may not directly benefit from the money they actually bring in.
I remember that from my time on the memorial park board, when I at least sold some trees.
So, you know, and then yet at other times, there's other funds that do come directly into their office that do impact that office. So is that, yeah, it's, it's kind of a confusing web.
It's nuanced, like all of government, right?
It's government.
All right. And you guys jump in anytime you want to, if I, if I'm skipping something or you need to add a point, feel free to anybody that's here, jump in. Where this is a, this is not going to be necessarily entirely a, a debate where you guys have got two minutes dance or something. This is a conversation. I'm going to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. But if there's a point you guys need to add on to, please, please jump in, okay? But with that, we'll go to Betsy, and it's, it's going to be the same, the same jumping off point. How do you view the role?
Sure.
And the, how, how are you uniquely qualified, I guess?
Sure. Clay obviously defined it really well. We're the fiscal body, we're the legislative body. Our role is finances. It's setting budgets. It's making sure money's being spent appropriately. It's offering tax abatements or considering tax abatements. It's, I need to get closer here.
Yep, you do. I'm gonna, I'm trying to help everybody with this. I'm the only one wearing the headset. So it's, you guys don't have that for, for balance. But yeah, if you can be about three to four inches away from the front of that mic, you're going to do, you're going to sound the best to those at home.
Sure. Well, obviously, we all want to sound good. So it's, it's been an education for me. I've always known the actual technical definition of council. I knew that when I ran in 2018. But to really be in the role and understand that people come to you and they want help with things, or they have ideas. And it's like, I agree, but that's out of my hands. Generally, it's something where you would refer to the commissioners. And I do see a role for us in making sure that we are facilitating those conversations and making sure that whatever our constituents need, if we can't give it to them, we point them in the right direction. So it's been a really interesting learning curve. I've really enjoyed the five months I've had in the role. What I think I bring to the role, I, I'm going to keep saying this, I'm young, I'm about a decade younger than everybody else on council at least.
You look two decades younger than Clay.
I actually don't know how old Clay is.
I used to be the youngest. I'm not so much anymore.
Well, and Chad and Susan, too. I mean, relatively young people to be serving in public office. So I think, I guess I'm the youngster. But I do bring a lot of experience in with regards to campaigns, with regards to policy and studying. I come from that academic background. I know how to read a study. I've learned how to read budgets. When I was, this is silly. I mean, I don't mean to make it about student government, but when I was student body president at Ball State, I won an election for 22,000 people. That's how many people are on campus. That's the size of Newcastle. That's pretty cool. I handled major budgets on campus. They're, not to say that prepared me awesomely for council, but it was a start. I, I am putting down my roots here. I could have moved anywhere in the country, anywhere in the state. I have a remote job. This is where I care about. This is where I'm from. This is where I want to be. I want to see us thrive. I want to see us take advantage of the assets that we have. And I want to make sure we're putting down a vision that makes sense for our future. And a big part of that to me is the development of our county on the I-69 and I-70 corridors. We are uniquely placed and uniquely blessed that Indianapolis is growing and thriving, which who knows with COVID, but I anticipate our capital city is going to continue growing in our direction. Hamilton County, Hancock County, we see the growth in those places. That's going to be us in five, 10, 15 years. We've got to get ready now. We've got three interchanges on 70. I'm deeply, deeply interested in developing an interchange at I-69 and 236 and Middletown, things like that. I'm very interested in broadband internet, which is deeply behind in our county. That's something that the state level is really pushing, but I think at the county level, we too need to be working on that. Also, obviously, I'm very interested in economic development, and of course, keeping our fiscal house in order. And we know that we were already in a jam. The council of the last year has worked so hard to get our financial house in order. And then a pandemic hits. We have to make tough decisions in the future, really, really tough decisions. And I think I've been a part of that up to this, this point. And I'd like to continue to be.
Travis, right up on the microphone for me.
Yes, sir.
What, how do you view the role? And why are you uniquely qualified, I guess?
How I view the role as a councilman for the county is, is a steward of the financial situation here. We're not elected leaders, although people refer to that as elected leaders. We're more of elected representatives. We represent the people. So our job is to save our dollars, to spend them wisely, not fritter away money. When you're in a sound financial situation, it's okay to expand. It's okay to spend tax dollars on growth. But when you're not in a financial situation to do that, you have to be a very hard steward of the people's money. You have to fix your existing structural, such as the county roads are a mess. It seems we can always find money for a special project, or an expo center, or an ex, whatever. But we can never find extra money to throw into county roads or the existing structures that we need to fix. A jail, everybody in this room has known for 15 years that we're going to need a jail. Same way I know my house is going to need a roof in 10 years. So I save up a little by little, because I can't afford $13,000 at once for a roof. I save for that. It just seems like the, the county never saves. They just wake up one day and go, wow.
Harold, have we checked the, the jail for hail damage? That's how most people get new roofs around the county.
Exactly.
Well, I had that new roof when I was sheriff.
I'm just, it seems to be, honestly, my whole neighborhood got a new roof. I think there was a hailstorm that hit everybody but me. So I just wanted to check in and see if we looked into that.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. We just need to save for the future. Instead of every special project that comes down the pike, we seem to have money to give to nonprofits, to give to special projects. But we never have money to fix the sound financial structure of Henry County, like the roads, the existing buildings. We keep growing as a county, but our population's not growing. Let's fix our foundation and then grow.
All right. Harold, what do you say?
Well, I've got all kinds of answers, but I don't have time.
Oh, we got time. This is a podcast. The clock works for us. We could be here till midnight.
No, we, we have a very important job, and it's not an easy job at this time in financing all the county expenses. When I first ran for sheriff, and it's same way, and still goes now for me as a councilman, my first objective is to serve the people and stand behind what the majority of them want. I've actually voted for things that I wasn't real high on, but the majority of the people I talked, talked to wanted it, so I supported them. That's my job. It's not a personal thing all the time. However, there are issues that go personal with me. But that's one example. You know, the biggest problem we have, we don't misspend money. We just don't get the money from the state. People don't realize this. Since 2010, when they passed the, what was it, 2011 bill or 2010 bill?
The constitutional amendment for tax caps?
The state legislature. Well, they put that off on us. Plus, they put on us where we had, if we wanted a tax raise, we had to do it. They got out of the fire.
That's what I
I was a little upset over that. But it's put us in a serious situation. I'd like to see people's taxes cut, don't get me wrong. But I think they went at it too much. And that's our whole issue right now for a lot of the problems we've got. We don't have the money coming in. The first few years, and I don't know what the statistics were for this year, they kind of seemed to be $900 million a year on our budget. Now, how is anybody going to operate on that?
They being the state board of accounts or?
Legislature.
So that we had In 2018, that was one of the themes of the, the campaign in the race I was in was, it felt like the state handed you a revolver, put the bullet in the gun and said, hey, council, you need to pull the trigger because you need to have a low it, and you need to vote for it, or else you're the ones that didn't put the funds in place.
Just like you mentioned, that's, this is the reason we're running so tight on money. We aren't getting the income we once got. I mean, you think back over those years, how much money we've lost. And it is tough. We picked every year budget time, we have to pick the bone. I mean, it's just about all that's left.
I don't look at it as though money the county's lost. I look at it as though money the people have gained. I understand where you're coming from. You're dealing with less money, but now we just need to be tighter on the budgets with the money. And you're dealing with that. And it is hard to do.
It's a cut every year.
And I, and I agree with that.
When we have a budget hearing every year, we have to go through and make a lot of cuts we really don't want to make.
And especially when the state each year adds more.
And we're not blowing money. I guarantee you, we don't have it to blow.
You're cut both ways.
Harold, let me ask the question this way. If you compare your head count for county employees 20 years ago, when you came onto the council versus now, how, how does the head count compare?
We probably got less people now, because they had better income back then. Highway Department at one time had around 32, 33 members, that right click. Now they're down to the low twenties. See, there's, I'm sure there's other officers that ran in the situation.
It was before my time, but from what I heard, like the, the 08, 09 era, what, that hit everybody. I'd heard the previous council members talk about during that time, there was a lot of people that either were maybe not laid off, but didn't rehire. And the highway department was one of the big ones that got hit. And it was, Joe says they did. Used to have 30 some employees. Now they're down to low twenties. And so, but I have, I have five, 10 minutes worth of stuff I could comment on right now. So as soon as you let me go, I'll go ahead and comment.
We'll cycle back around. And like any true politician, you'll take my question and turn it into whatever the hell you want to.
I'm just waiting on you.
I'm confident you're gonna, you're gonna get to go.
It's your show, brother.
We'll do a brief reset here. This is the candidate series of the We'll do a brief reset here. This is the candidate series of the Ball Sock of Liberty. Uh, we are talking to the Republican candidates for the county council race. Our county primary is a week from today. So, uh, seven days from right now, you guys are going to know.
It's almost here.
It's going to be over. This is extended an extra week, an extra month rather, uh, thanks to the pandemic. So we're in June and we still don't know who the, uh, who the candidates in the fall are going to be. Um, right now the three incumbents in the seat are with us, uh, and Travis Lyle is the, the one Republican challenger. At this time, there are two Democrats that are expected to be on the ballot in the fall. Uh, still opportunities for the Democrats and libertarians to add more candidates. So we may end up with six, eight, nine candidates on the ballot in the fall. We just don't know yet.
Yeah. Who are you going to put forth?
We don't know yet.
That's top secret information.
Nobody knows.
Top secret. They don't even share that with me.
I don't think even the candidates, potential candidates know, uh, they haven't, uh, they haven't done the straw draw yet to find out who the libertarians are going to run or if they will. Uh, it's the unique, the unique opportunity that the libertarians have is that their convention is, uh, strategically after the primary to make any determinations as to what the libertarian party wants to do. Uh, and thanks to the pandemic or unthanks to the pandemic, that convention actually got moved back. So libertarians are going to determine their candidates, June 20th.
June 20th.
Uh, that's the, uh, that's the date that that one's going to happen. So thank you very much to Wylens Flowers for putting the candidate series on again this year. Um, we'll stay with our serpentine draft style here and we'll, we'll go with Harold again. Uh, this last week, there was some news made. The council said because of the COVID-19 pandemic, they're going, you guys are going to take $150,000 from the food and beverage tax. So in Henry County, there's an extra 1% when you go to a restaurant, uh, an extra 1% tax get, comes out of your check. And in the past, those funds have gone to projects memorial park. They originally paid for the, uh, the, the hall of fame museum. They've paid for some improvements at the saddle club. I think there were some, some various community projects. This time the council has said, we're going to earmark that money, $150,000 to build a program for local restaurants and restaurateurs. Can you tell me about that and your views and how that, how that's supposed to work?
Well, I'll tell you what, I think this is a great idea. We will, it was like it was discussed during the meeting. In the past, uh, we've never done anything as far as kind of like charity goes. Uh, it's always been, uh, different programs, uh, like the, uh, paying on some of the, uh, expo center at the park, Ivy Tech, Hall of Fame down here, which are great. Don't get me wrong, great contributions. This is actually the first time that we've actually gave to human beings trying to get by on a restaurant they owned and they've been down out of business for a long time and they're hurting. And we just felt like, I thought whoever brought it up, I don't remember. I thought it was an excellent idea.
I believe it came from our business leaders. So it came from, uh, Corey Murphy of the EDC. It came from Carrie Barrett of Newcastle Main Street. He just helped me with her name. It came from Sean DeVoe at the chamber. And then finally I know Chad, our colleague on council, Chad Malakot. Um, it sounds like they were working together to address a need brought to them. And that's sort of how it was conceptualized as I understand it.
Right. We figured a lot of these people were paying on food and beverage tax. Why not give them the, the help from that? Uh, you know, and one thing good about that food and beverage tax, we're not just hitting the local people that they don't notice it as much. When they go in and get gas or eat a meal, you know, you don't think much about them. And we're also getting people passed through the county. It's not just Henry County people. So I think that's a great help to us too.
So if somebody stops at Montgomery's that's passing through town on 70 or somebody that's coming and stopping at Danny's for a meal, they're paying that 1%. And they might be from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and chipping into, chipping into that program. All right, Travis, what, uh, what do you say?
I say it's another case of, uh, we don't have money to fix the county roads. The budgets are tight, but yet we're taxing the people to spend $150,000 to give it back to, uh, so we can pick the winners and losers. We'll pick the businesses that we decide to give the money to. And if you're not one of them that we chose, then good luck with that. You'll still pay the tax whenever you go out to eat. We need to be more fiscally sound with the people's money. I'm all for eliminating the food and beverage tax was, which was enacted originally to pay for the hall of fame. It was promised that we would enact the tax, pay for the hall of fame, and then get rid of the tax. That was not the case. That was a lie told to us by politicians and it was extended and it, and it's just now it's a tool used at the discretion of whoever wants to use the money. Now we're giving it to Newcastle Main Street. So at their discretion, they can choose who to give the money to, or whoever we decide to give the money to. I say we should pay off the bonds that were issued for it and get rid of the tax.
So you're, you're saying to sunset the, uh, sunset the food and beverage tax. Once the, um, I guess the Ivy Tech and the memorial park payments are complete?
Yes. Devote a hundred percent to paying those off and then get rid of them.
Betsy?
Uh, I don't think, I'll just speak for myself here. I don't know that anybody is disagreeing that the food and beverage tax shouldn't be sunsetted. I mean, we don't want excess tax, but we have it. It came before we got here. It's sitting in a fund and that fund is really tightly restricted how it can be used. It can be used for economic development and that's it. We can't put it into the roads. Believe me, I.
Can we use it to pay off the bonds that were borrowed on it?
It's, it's very, very tightly controlled. And as, as far as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, it is to be used for economic development. So we have this situation brought to us by our business community and leaders saying, our local businesses, not the McDonald's, but our local businesses, the primos, the stacks, the park restaurant, these local owned businesses, they're in a jam. What can we do? And I understand where you're coming from. We have to be fiscally sharp. We really do. But since this fund is so tightly controlled, here's a good use for it where we support our local business community. We return taxes that they collected. I, I can't think of a better use of money. And we actually gave a lot less money than they requested. And the way I, the way I look at it is wait and see, let's see how this money's used. It sounds like the committee that's looking at applications is doing a brilliant job of being detailed and thorough to make sure it's being spent well. I'm excited. I think, I mean, we can't use it on roads. Believe me. I want to see our roads get better. And I know Joe Wiley's doing a heck of a job working on that, um, and his crews, but this is what we have in front of us. I feel like we made a good move last week. I'm proud of it. I stand behind it.
How is that money being distributed? Cause I know the city has chipped in some money as well. And it's going through Corey Murphy and Corey Murphy has a group that Corey Murphy doesn't decide when. He has a revolving loan fund that goes out to local businesses.
Sure.
They have to apply. I know it's a board that decides that and it's local business people. Um, I know that like there's retired bank president, um, and Alex said, and I can't think of all the people that are involved. There's quite a few people involved, some local business people. So is that money going through a similar type boards? Corey managing that? Or is, is it going through a different group? Like, you know how it's being handled?
So there's the EDC enterprise loan fund and I'm, I'm not an expert on these. I, I've seen the reports. I've seen information. I've asked for more information. So please, everybody correct me if I, I'm wrong on the details here, but for the Newcastle main tree, main street restaurant resiliency program, that is a very, very specific set of parameters someone would have to go through before they would be eligible for this grant. And my understanding is that they're going to be incredibly discerning on how they hand out that money. And they ask a lot of applica- a lot of questions and a lot of it is, is this, is your business viable? How are you impacted by COVID? What will this money do for you? And they really have to get into the deep, the nitty gritty here. So we'll see. As far as I know, the, it's, you know, we asked a lot of questions during our session last week. It sounds like they've done a great job putting it together and it is a responsible use of the money that was collected.
Clay, I'm going to defer to you on this, as you answer this question, but I also want to throw in, isn't there a board that reviews the food and beverage, you know, in the past, there's been an application process and I know we're in a pandemic. So maybe the rules or the application of this changed a little bit, but there's been a board that would review and make recommendations previously when the last cycle came up and I want to say it was 2015, 2016, somewhere in that range. Um, I, I get hazy. It's been, it's been a while, but somewhere in that range.
Okay. Um, yeah. So, um, you're, you're correct. The way that's been operated in the past. So again, some of this predates me, but I learned very quickly once I got on the board and I know some of the history about, um, about food and beverage tax. So what happened is they, they did institute it for the, for the hall of fame and then it was built. Now, when it was instituted, uh, I, I have no clue if, if they had voted to sunset it, or it was only supposed to last a certain amount of time. I don't know for sure. But, um, the, the honest truth is at some point, um, I think it was, I think it was around the year I was running the, for the first time in the county council. Evidently somebody, uh, discovered, so before I say this.
Turn, turn your mic towards yourself just a little bit. You're talking across. That will help.
All right. There we go.
Now people will hear you.
So before I say this, um, there is, and, and see, and this is why, why people like Travis get frustrated is because there has been a history of ill performance. And, uh, a lot of times when there's, and I'm going to get to food and beverage, but when there's ill performance, sometimes if things are going well enough, you don't see it, right? Because the economy at the time maybe covers up some of the, uh, poor performance that goes on behind the scenes, but typically like, like water beating against a rock, eventually the rocky roads. Um, and then you're left to discover, oh no, the foundation's weak. Um, and I think Henry County's had a history of that, uh, to be quite honest. And when I first came on, um, so in specifically just addressing the food and beverage tax portion, when I came on, uh, evidently that it somehow got lost, the food and beverage tax, believe it or not.
The, the committee hadn't met for a very long time and there was a, a good bit of money sitting there.
Yeah. So, so, um, again, its initial response, all the monies went to hall of fame and it was built and then it was forgotten about. And I don't know who it was, but somebody had discovered, holy cow, we have about $3 million sitting in the bank from food and beverage tax. Um, and then the leadership at that time, um, decided to form a committee of community members, um, and to take applications on how they would disperse, uh, the food and beverage tax money, uh, because it, it can be used for economic development and tourism. Okay. So then that first round took place. Uh, again, I, it, correct, I, I may be wrong, but I am almost a hundred percent positive. That was just when I was first starting to run. Uh, and they had a meeting and I remember being there at the meeting when, uh, they presented to the council their.
So this is 2012, 2013, somewhere in that range.
Yeah. And, and so, so that happened and, and it was dispersed, uh, throughout the county, different places. Um, and then once I came on board, uh, obviously because it was found, I mean, I'll, I'll just continue on because you probably got listeners going, how in the world do you not know you have three million in the bank? All I will say to that is I absolutely agree with you. I, I don't know how they didn't know that, but I wasn't there. I don't know. I never asked. So let's move on. They discovered it. So now we know it's there. Um, then we started dispersing it again to those various areas. Then it began to accumulate again.
And that, that was the round of funding that paid for Ivy Tech and some other projects at the time.
Yes. Yes.
The construction of that building.
Yeah. Because, and that's right. Cause I, I wasn't there. Cause I remember being at the Ivy Tech opening, but I had nothing to do with it. I was just there. Um, so anyways, goes on and, and so Travis is right. What they do was they, they bond and then they use that money to pay for the bond. Okay. So then we went through another round and we began to disperse the money throughout the county. Um, one of, one of the things that I thought from the beginning is because we had some infrastructure that it could have went to that was in dire need, um, such as the Smith building, such as some of the buildings at the park that were hurting, you know, um, we could have really focused kind of like they did with the hall of fame. We could have focused on a building and really got something done. But again, you have a million or so dollars that gets spread out. And I'm not saying they went to bad projects, um, but it was just spread out. Um, and then so it all comes around again. And actually the last vote on food and beverage, I, I actually voted no, uh, on, on the dispersal of food and beverage tax because, um, again, I just thought as a whole, some of the bigger chunks were going to, uh, things that, that just spread it too thin and didn't really accomplish a bigger goal. Right? Um, so I actually voted no on that dispersment. Um, so now we have again, bonds that, that we have for food and beverage tax to pay for. And the reason here, here's, here's why we, again, it's one of those things. You may not like it, but it's the way it is. Um, if you want to get rid of food and beverage tax period, then you would absolutely disagree with what we did. Uh, but if you see its use and that a lot of the money comes from other people also, and it accomplishes things that no other monies can, right? We can't, we don't use general fund money for some of these different projects, but the food and beverage tax is there for these specific projects.
The Smith building? Like, isn't the Smith building leased out?
You can use it for the Smith building.
Leased out to private entities now though? It's no longer a county.
It always has been.
Okay. So now.
People have always been able to rent the Smith building.
Well, people would rent it, but now it's leased to a private entity like a, a museum.
The downstairs is under negotiation. We talked about that last week with Kim. Downstairs is the Smith building. It's going to be the 501(c)(3) for veterans group and upstairs is still the county's control.
Still the county's control. Right. And so delete, but what I'm saying is we use the money from county funds, food and beverage funds, such as we did to rip out the playground out at, at memorial park. And now it's leased to a private entity to build an expo.
I'll get there in just a second.
No problem.
So, um, so now we have a situation where because of the way the state issues hands down how we have to do the food and beverage tax, if we did not vote to bond again to, to have the money, that would have been completely lost because the state would have said, okay, it's expired. So what we agreed to do to keep the, to keep the tax, again, if you don't like the tax and you don't think these projects are worth, um, investing in, then you would not like the decision. But if you think some of these projects are worth investing in, such as some of the park things, some of the, the smaller, uh, towns around have money, food and beverage monies invested in them. If you think those small towns are worth it, and if you think those projects are worth it, then, then you, uh, would probably at least understand why we made the decision to go ahead and keep the food and beverage tax and re-bond. Okay. So now, but what, there was also another big project added to the last year or to the last time we did this. And again, I was no on that also. So again, you have a, a tremendous tool that could be used for a lot of good, but I will say, um, since my time on the council, there has, it has been used in ways that I personally don't prefer. I think we could have done more, um, by focusing on a target, right? Again, so that's why I voted no. Now here we are. Again, I know it's a long way around, but there's a lot of history here. It's easy to come in and just kind of say, this is what you should do, and this is what you should do. But there is a lot of history. Now here we are. We've been collecting food and beverage to pay the bonds. We have to keep at least three months worth of, um, payments in, in the bank and that's 900 and some thousand dollars. Okay. We have around 2 million right now or so. Now some of us aren't comfortable with whittling it all the way down to that 900,000 because we don't know what's going to happen. Because during this pandemic, we may not be collecting as much food and beverage tax.
Buying behavior has changed and.
Exactly.
Unemployment's gone up. Yeah.
So we want to be sure we can pay our payments. All right. So there was, it was not planned to use this money right now. Um, that was not the intention, but because of the pandemic, um, again, our business leaders got together and they said, hey, you have food and beverage tax money. Would you be willing to extend that to a grant program or a loan program? And, and so that's where we, uh, eventually worked around. I think we allowed Main Street to use a previous, uh, awarded 40 some thousand.
Forty plus thousand dollars. Yeah.
Into a small business grant.
Yeah. And Newcastle gave to the actual loan fund for the EDC. You guys gave to a grant program run by Newcastle Main Street. And then you guys just recently realotted $150,000 into a separate grant fund just for sole restaurants as far as I understand.
Yeah. For the restaurants. And then we, uh, 20,000.
Being a board member, you have a little information.
If I remember right, 20,000 went to the, uh, loan fund.
That's my recollection.
The loan fund.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So, but, but I don't want to, uh, I want to address the, the whole, um, expo center thing too, at the appropriate time, because that's a whole nother ballgame.
I've got a, uh, we've got a section in here where we're going to get to memorial park. So I think that's probably a part of that, of that conversation.
So, uh, did that explain it pretty well? I mean, you know, you know some about that food and beverage. Is that pretty?
I, I'll leave this as an open floor here. Real quick. If anybody else has more comments on the food and beverage, we can get into that now. Harold or Travis or Betsy.
One comment.
All right.
I was going to bring up about the center out there at the park, but we should go wait, do that a little later. Uh, mention it then.
Yeah. We're, we're going to get into memorial park towards the end.
A lot of people wanted to know, why would you want to have? People wanted to know, why would you want to have Ivy Tech come out here and pay money for that? Well, during that time, prior to that, through studies and all that was made, they found out. And we pretty well, this was common sense. We realized that there was a lot of young people. Once they got out of high school, they were going somewhere else. And one thought of this was, we trade them here. Then hopefully they're going to stay here. They found this happens more often. For instance, now they're training nursing. There's nursing right now, there's a shortage. And who knows, I'm sure that some of them eventually will go out here locally. Or doctor's offices or maybe even a neighboring county, but they're still, if they live here, they're still going to spend money here. I think it was very worthwhile that we did that.
Are you speaking to brain drain, you know, people getting educated and leaving or leaving for education and then ever coming back?
Right. Welding, all kinds of things they teach.
Yeah, that's a huge concern of mine as a, as a university staff member, or I'm not a staff member, I'm a, I'm an educator.
You're faculty.
I'm faculty, right. It's, it really concerns me that almost everybody I graduated with in the top 10 at Shenandoah, they're gone. They're in Fishers, they're in Indianapolis, they're in Chicago, they're everywhere but here. I'm sort of an anomaly and I chose it very purposefully. We've got to find reasons to keep people here. We want to keep the cream of the crop here. We want to develop, we want to realize this vision for our future. And so any way that we can help to accomplish that, and I guess on council, our options are fairly limited, given that we're not the executives of the county. But obviously we want to, we want to encourage that. We need young, thriving people here.
Have you ever considered lowering taxes to draw people here? It'll draw businesses. That's my plan is to lower taxes. It draws businesses, businesses draw people. In, in Newcastle, Indiana has a unique history. If you go back to the thirties and forties and look at the history of it, we had plentiful jobs and low taxes. Chrysler was one of the largest manufacturers, Modern Fold, French Crayle Piano Company, shovel manufacturers. We had a lot of manufacturing and we had low taxes.
Sure.
And that's the reason it was a draw for all these businesses.
Do we have lower taxes in Indianapolis and Fishers?
We have. With, when you add on the fees and the taxes at this town, we have about fairly equal.
What about out in the county?
We have a lower cost of living.
We have a lower cost of living.
I work in Indianapolis. I come home and I know that we just had, if people know the Ingersoll House over by the cemetery, it just sold and it needs a lot of money put into it. It sold for the price of like a decent house in Fishers and it's like a mansion. Like it's, so people ask me sometimes at home, like you drive 45 minutes into work, which now it's a 45 second walk up the stairs for, for the summer. But I've, like, I have a friend who's a teacher in the West Coast, his wife's a teacher on the West Coast, and they have to subsidize his wife's salary for her to live where her school is.
Right.
Because the cost of living is so bad.
We don't want to get there.
No, you're exactly right, Travis. We do not want high taxes. I have a sister who lives in New York City. The other one lives in San Francisco. So this is something we joke about in my family because those cities, my goodness, the tax rates are astronomical. They live there not for the taxes. They don't love the taxes. They're there for the amenities. They're there for the services. They're there for the culture. Taxes, keeping taxes low is really important.
Yes.
You won't find anybody in this room who disagrees, but that it should be a high priority, but there's more to living and drawing people than just low taxes. And so we have to think big picture about it. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm simply adding to that vision and saying, we have to think bigger.
We do, but we have a higher tax rate than we had in the eighties, but a lot less population.
I don't think a young person in, that I know, I can think of would say, I moved away from Henry County because of the high taxes.
No, but people do get fed up. Their, their water bill is a hundred and some dollars a month because they add on trash, add on sewage fees, what they raise every year. All these fees take out of the pocket of the average taxpayer. The extra 1% when you go out to eat, that's 8% of your take home pay, which is already taxed at around 40% if you take in all the other taxes.
Sure.
Then you pay the extra tax on the fuel, excise tax. If you smoke, you're paying everything, your tax of death in this world. So I think being a studious stewards of the money is the most important thing.
I will note this, that a lot of that had to do with the city and your water bills and all that. All the different things you have to pay for.
And some of that, to go back to what you guys were saying before, stuff that's coming down that has nothing to do with any decision makers in the city or the county. Our water bills are crazy because the EPA told the city, you have to separate storm and sewer water. And so that's this massive project. So I don't know if you ever look at your water bill, I think my water bill is like a hundred and ten dollars. The actual water bill is $9.00. The storm water bill is like 55 or $60 and it's gone up and up and up. But I guess one question I had when listening to Clay talk earlier was what kinds of projects do you like to see for that food and beverage money? Because I see the issue you have with, if you try and target one thing, like Newcastle's put a lot of effort into downtown and Main Street. People get mad because they say, I don't live in downtown, I don't live in Main Street. You're neglecting the north side, you're neglecting the east side. And if you spread it too thin, then you don't really have anything to point at and say, look what we got done. Or in, so how, what, in what ways do you like to see that money used? Or what kind, what kind of projects look good to you on that one, on that kind of funding?
Me specifically?
Or to anybody. Yeah. If you had the choice of like, if you got some money and you want to put it somewhere because.
What's your pet project?
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Can I take this in a different direction and then?
But first of all, we had mentioned something about water, city water, like county council has nothing to do with that.
Right. Yeah, that's totally.
I get my water free.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, well water.
I pay the water bill. I live in the city, but yeah, I mean, some of these things are beyond county council's responsibility.
It all comes out of the same taxpayers pockets, all I'm saying is. So any tax at all, lowering any tax at all helps the local taxpayer.
Sure, sure.
I pay city water taxes. So every little fee, I'm tired of, people say, well, it's only going to cost the average household $10 a month, which is not much. They add up over time and they really become a burden to the lower class families or even middle class family.
Well, and one of, like he said, one of the biggest issues was because of separation of sewage and stormwater.
But then they, they taxes on that as well, and then lost a large chunk of that money that they forgot about. And then came back and raised that tax. It's all been mismanaged.
Call the city council on that one.
We would love to.
I think that's a conversation for the young people.
Sometimes, sometimes you live in the county and you still have to pay a water bill.
Exactly.
You're a victim like me in wide states.
He knows that.
I'm, I'm tact, I'm like Washington DC. I'm taxed without representation. I don't have a city councilman to vote out.
Right.
But I swear to God, my water bill set a hundred and forty dollars this month, my water and sewer bill.
Yes.
I did call and say, hey, y'all charged me too much and they took 50 bucks off this month, thankfully.
Oh, that's good.
So I filled my pool and they didn't, they didn't account for it going in the pool. And they said, oh, you should have called next month. Because they only charge you for what goes in the sewer.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a convoluted racket. Thanks God. Thank God I knew how to make the call or else the people in Newcastle would have stolen a $50 bill from me.
Right, right.
And I, I like those, what, I don't even see a $50 bill anymore. What president's on the 50, Betsy?
I.
Pop quiz, Tony.
I, you know, I, I collect money. That's like my, one of my family.
Is it Hamilton? Is Hamilton on the 50 or he's on the 100?
No, isn't he on the?
Grant.
I'm going to embarrass myself.
Wealthy, wealthy Bertram over here said it's Grant and I think that's correct.
I don't carry a lot of cash anymore. When I do, it's twenties.
Betsy has some pet projects for the food and beverage tax. I'm interested.
No, I actually don't. My answer to that is, well, I'm new, but I, how much longer do I get the new excuse?
I don't know. I think at six months, if you win this election, I think that's your last time you get to use the new excuse.
It lasts a couple of years sometimes if you work it real well.
I'm just getting used to it. No, I don't.
Harold over there tried to say he's new, so it's only been 20, it's only been two decades for him. You said you're still learning and you're new to the council.
We're all students at heart, right, Harold? We're all students.
I came on the council. I was talking to some of the old veterans like me, kind of a stepfather of the council.
Roll that.
Anyway. I might get that in. Thank you. What was that now?
You were telling a story.
Oh, we were just joking about being new. Yeah.
And I had them tell me, they said, I said, boy, you know, there's a lot here to learn. I was new and I had no idea. And they said, you're going to find out, you're going to learn something every year.
Yep.
Twenty years, if you're here, you're going to still be learning. And they were right. And I think Clay, and you will soon find out, if you get reelected, we would too.
Sure.
You learn something all the time, new, you thought, you know, you pretty well knew the game, but it's, it's a continuous learning process.
I appreciate that. It seems like all of our colleagues are interested in that, that they're, they're maybe some old dogs on the council, but they're always interested in learning new tricks and trying to serve people.
We're there to help each other too.
Right. I've been really impressed by that. I, I had relationships with a lot of the members of council prior to joining the council, but it was like I've gotten to know you a lot better. Like we've always been like friendly, but like you've been really helpful to me in explaining things. Harold, you've always been a wealth of knowledge. I, it's been really cool to see the collaborative nature of the council. And it's, it really is a good team. And not to say everybody agrees all the time, but I would say we have really good debates, really good discussions. And we generally come up with, we've had a lot of consensus lately.
I know you say it's collaborative, but I, it feels like you've called Harold Cannon and Peg Old like three times on this show so far.
Pretty sure I didn't. I'm pretty sure I didn't. And pretty sure you're trying to get me in trouble, sir. My fact checker, my fact checker, who's also my mother says grants on the 50.
There we go.
Back to the agenda, the food and beverage money. I have no agenda for it. You know, the, the way we just spent the last portion was a request from our business community. What has come to me since then is businesses who that doesn't apply to, businesses who feel like they're falling through the cracks in the county, the very smallest businesses who've just been hammered by COVID. And they're saying, what about us? And I knew that would happen the minute that we did that. And so my thought is, I don't have a specific agenda, but with regards to the parameters around how we can spend that money, how can we continue to take this tax money that's collected and prop, to assist our business community, to help facilitate good things for them as responsibly as possible. So I would say if I have to pick something, it's making sure we're taking, that we're providing opportunities for all, that people don't fall through the cracks.
So let's, let's put a pin in the, in the food and beverage conversation for now. And we'll start with, we'll start with Clay on this question and talk about the looming cloud that the council's had on it for, for a long period of time. There's been a lawsuit against the county dealing with our jail. And I understand that there's been a settlement in the last month. So if you'll give us the Cliff Notes version of, I guess, the settlement, Clay? And if you're happy with the way things turned out and, and you see, if you see a path forward.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, there was, there's, there was talk of a potential. The jail's been a problem for a long time. As soon as I came on to the council, people were in the county, we're talking about if we don't do something, there's going to be a federal lawsuit. So for many years, myself and I know former councilman Steve Dugger, Butch Baker, sheriff at the time, Ed Yanis, commissioner. And, and again, I'm throwing out names. There's others that I know I'm forgetting, but we wanted to address the situation. It became a difficult road, actually. I was surprised it was so difficult, being that it was such an obvious problem. So advanced that the lack of activity, the lack of action did lead to a federal lawsuit. And we were sued, the federal lawsuit was from the ACLU. And it was not, they weren't looking for money. They were looking for us to do something about our unsafe situation. That was their request. And so we got in and that's been going on for a few years now. But recently we were able to settle it. The ACLU lawyer was actually very nice. He was very to the point. He was there, he meant business, but he was very nice, very cooperative, very fair. And I think the settlement was good. I think, I think it was. It, it pushed us one and showed us that we had to do something. Which was to, to every council members made every council member happy that, that we were taking action because this, again, I'm in between. I, I always say the old council and the new council. The, the people that I'm working with now, everyone before, great people. Okay. But sometimes there's certain positions you don't want your friends in, right? Because you know them and you don't want them to mess anything up, but you're friends with them, right? You love them. But this group of council members is working very strategically, very hard to get some things done. And so during that settlement, there was, there was, they want us to increase our manpower. We agreed, we are pursuing the new detention center building, things of that nature sufficed the settlement. So they're willing to settle with us. Their lawyer dropped his fees by 12,000 or so. So we did have to pay, pay his fees, which was $20,000. But we're moving forward and so, long story, I guess, to get there. Is there a path forward? Absolutely. So we finally settled on what looks like a, a good place to, to put the new facility. And that is moving forward. We were just, myself, councilman Malakot was just in a meeting with the sheriff and a couple of the commissioners and Elavatas and our manager that we have, construction manager, and went over some of the details moving forward. And what we were told from that meeting, we hope to be breaking ground in, I think they said September. So, and the, the ground is located by the Geo prison.
Up on Van Nuys Road. So northeast of Memorial Park. It's a good location. And the land was donated by the state, so we saved what we think was what estimated a million dollars on that.
Yeah, yeah. There's a, what they call an interlocal agreement, I think, between the state and the county.
So that's been great that we fought really hard for that. Representative Tom Saunders really worked on that with the governor to make sure that we got that. That was huge tax paying, or huge savings for the taxpayers. The blueprints we're actually using for the jail come directly from blueprints they've already used before in Decatur County and Adams County. And I asked the architect in a meeting we had a few months ago, what are we saving by using these blueprints? And just slightly tweaking them based to our specific standards, based on what the jail commander, the sheriff and the major want. Our, you know, our needs. And they said, oh, ballpark, at least a billion. And I see Mr. Mitchell's commented in the chat that we need a lot of help with drug treatment in the county. We're, we're really looking to do that at the detention center. We absolutely need those services in the county.
That's part of the.
It's been, you know, obviously the jail thing was kick the can for a long time. It's been desperately needed. Here we are. I'd like to think that its conceptualization has been as strategic as possible for our needs. But also the cost savings, the, what the sheriff's done, what, what everybody's done. I mean, it's just been a really high priority. So I've come into the project later than others, even though I've sat on the jail master planning committee for a few years. I've been very, very impressed with what we've come up to this point. A federal judge easily could have said, you know what, you are going to build that jail and it's going to cost 40 or 50 million.
Yeah.
Because I, I want you to build the Taj Mahal. They're just trying to, they're trying to follow every, you know, all the red tape, all the laws, whatever we have to do, they're doing it. But they're doing it really, I think strategically. We'll see how it ends up. But so far as a new member, as, you know, with new eyes, I've been very impressed.
So Betsy, would you say you're happy with the settlement, getting that behind the council at this point?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, the fact that Ken Falk from the ACLU Indiana was willing to reduce his fees, that he, he could have taken our lunch. Like he could have done so much to mess with us. Honestly, it was, the whole point of it was you need a jail, you need to be constitutional. It's hard to disagree with that. Yeah. I mean, I think the settlement was probably about as good as we were ever going to get and we're lucky to put it behind us.
And you're, you're saying a million dollars is what was saved for that parcel of ground?
Am I remembering that correctly? It's around a million. I know.
That's what I'm hearing.
In conversations.
By not having to buy the land.
Right, right. And then another million.
Six acres.
Sure. Yeah. And I'll say corrected, but that was my recollection.
I, I've got a lot of farmers that probably sell you seven acres for 900,000. I'm just saying.
Sure. We didn't have to spend it at all. So that's good.
Right, right.
And, you know, just the blueprints, like just, just taking advantage of different options and the, and the architect, choosing an architect that was good with that. They've been great so far, Elavatas, so.
You know, and I'm not trying to, you know, originally the judge was, he was wanting several more jailers that we have right now. And I think they said we had 22, is that correct? Something like that, jailers. And they was wanting more. But now, according to this agreement, what I was reading, he's kind of leaving that open for the time being to see how things go. But in honesty, when we went down to Decatur County Jail, Greensburg, we got to tour through there and some of them also went to Adams County. I didn't make that. But there's a lot of places in that jail that aren't necessary to be used now. The sheriff's thinking about bringing in some detectives and possibly drug force people there rather than working out of in the city. There's more privacy back there too. And we noticed and they told us, just like night shift, the way that interior of the jail is where the cell block is. It's round. It's like you see in the movies. And then like a crow's nest up here where you have a jail control officer. They can watch all over that place, that one person with cameras and plus they're on view because it's like a half moon. Plus there's a second deck up above. Now, if you want. Plus there's a second deck up above. Now, if you want to put it, it's set at about 248 inmates, if I remember right. They could actually get more in there if they run into the situation. There's a couple areas they could put cells in or just make them into cell rooms that they could use if they got overcrowded to cover them. But right now the intention is just to leave that open.
So the new jail design gives you some flexibility, you give capacities to go.
Absolutely. And I don't know how many, you've been there before, obviously in the jail.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You were sheriff, you were in there. I, I took a tour, uh, a few months ago with the sheriff. Um, have you guys been in the jail?
Yeah. I, when I was running for council, I got a, I got a nickel tour.
Have you ever been in there? Okay.
A lot of my family's been in there. I have, uh, I've yet to step foot in that establishment.
Travis, I know a lot of people have detoured it as they've been running. So I.
No, I spent a year and a half in the jail.
Okay.
Well, you know.
On the other side of the bars.
Okay. So you, so you could maybe speak to the experience. It's not a great place.
We've known for years that we need a new county jail.
Right.
The problem I have is not that we needed a new county jail. We did. The expense was coming. The problems I have is number one, how much money did we have in our rainy day fund? We've never appropriated any money to our rainy day fund to save up for jail, even though we knew it was needed. Number two, it's sad that it took a lawsuit to bring about actions that we, we ourselves knew that we needed. We needed a new county jail. We knew that we were overcrowded. We could have implemented policies such as on misdemeanors, book and release. That way we could let less people into the jail. I know we have a lot of people sitting in the jail over misdemeanors or, or whatever their little charges are disturbing the peace or whatever. We could have implemented several policies to, to try to help alleviate.
Nonviolent offenders.
Yes, nonviolent offenders, misdemeanor offenders. We could have, there's several policies that's worked with other cities before, but we've known for 10 or 15 years that we needed jail. But yet our rainy day fund sits empty as we're, as we're putting money towards other projects. We're, we're giving money to nonprofits. We're giving money. And I know some of the, some of the people here agree, uh, this is not a personal attack against any of you, right? This is just, this is just saying a policy that's been implemented for a long time and everybody comes along with a special, oh, we need to help out the businesses that have been shut down during the COVID-19. Sure we do. We need to help out barber shops as well that were closed entirely, not just the restaurants that had carryout only. We need to help out a lot of other businesses, but that's not, the government shouldn't have shut them down in the first place, but then it's not our job to pick and choose who to give our tax money to, to pick winners and losers. We just, we lower the tax overall and it helps everybody. It helps every single taxpayer, not just a business owner, not just a restaurant, or not just a barber shop. It helps everybody recover. And that's, that's my position on the whole thing.
Sure. I think you're right that we have played in this county, we've had this mindset of kick the can for a really long time and we haven't taken care of what's in front of us. Am I phrasing that correctly? Kick the can, that concept. It's been a huge point of frustration for me. I know you've been very vocal about it, Harold too. It's, it's been hard when you don't have a majority who sees it that way. I think the cool thing now is that you're seeing a council that's taking a lot of action and that's, that's progress. What came before, we can debate about it all day. And I would say there was a lot of people who are willing to do that. Action now, and that's good. Um, I'm also really glad to see back, back to the jail. It's a deeply unsafe place for staff as well as people who are there who are incarcerated. I'm delighted to see, as you talked about the design of the future jail, the incarceration area. It's going to be much, much safer for everybody. And that's a win because what we put our, our jail staff through right now is it's not good and it's not fair to them. They're not getting paid enough for that.
People of night shift down there. And I think that's a little thin myself, in case you ran into a problem. But you could get by with a fifth of the people we've already got. And, uh, I think, and the people down there agreed with us when Kim and I went down. I think we can possibly, unless we have any problems, be able to operate properly. We may be able to get by with that.
Sure.
So Harold and Travis, before we get into the, the larger jail conversation, talking about the lawsuit settlement. Harold, are you, are you satisfied with the, with the settlement?
I think so. I've read it over the settlement. Uh, I don't think we should come out any better. I think really we were treated rather lenient and also our county attorney, Joel Harvey agreed. He, in fact, he told us all, he said that he really felt like we, uh, came out pretty fairly on this. And I do too. $20,000 and that's a lot of money. Don't get me wrong, but that's cheap for a lawsuit. I've seen them go a lot higher than that.
Yes. I think the lawsuit was fair to everybody involved. I'm just sad that the lawsuit had to be brought in the first place.
All right. So, so on, on the larger conversation, um, let's talk about, and let, last year, the county council voted to increase my taxes and Zach's taxes and everybody else in the room's taxes, uh, the income tax that the, the state offered. The 2018 campaign was about this on the council. The council voted, I believe six to one to approve that tax increase. That's only going to be a portion of paying for this new jail. So the number one role is, as this group has, uh, stated is county finances. You've got, we'll, we'll throw a $25 million number at it. I don't know if there's a number, another number that's used or budgeted. But we'll say, say 25 million. How does this council get to that $25 million number? Is it more tax increases? Is it bonds? How do you pay for that? And then that's part A. Part B is how do you make sure that we're not paying for a new jail in 40 years as we are with the one that's 200 feet from the studio?
Right.
So we'll start with, you guys flip a coin. I don't know. I don't care if we start with Clay or start with Harold this time, but let's work through it.
And on that particular question.
I guess we're starting with Clay.
I don't, I don't care where we start on that question, but I did want to say a positive, it, right now, as far as, um, we need to, the, during the lawsuit, what we learned is they would like to see us add 14 full-time staff. I think it's 14. Full-time staff right now is what they would like to demand, but they know it's impossible for us. The good news is with the new structure, because of the way it's designed, we can operate that facility, um, completely 100% well with, with efficiently, with the current staff. So.
So you feel good about the labor side, the labor side you feel good about, but actually building the structure and maintaining the structure.
Do you want me to roll on with that or do you want to go with Harold first?
Oh, well, I, I'll go with you. You're rolling, you're running.
Can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
The maintenance of the current jails, I understand it from our colleague Chad Malakot is extraordinarily expensive. We're going to reduce that immediately, obviously with the new facility. So that will help. How much remains to be seen, but in our figuring and talking with the architect and the sheriff, it's considerable.
It is going to help.
It's not paying for the building, of course, but it's, it's something. All right.
And so, so to, um, when Travis, Travis, a lot of Travis's points are very accurate. Um, I said the same thing since 2013. I mean, I was constantly beating that drum and you're exactly right. We knew it was here. I questioned why are, why are we not saving? Why are we not planning? Why are we not preparing for a new jail? We know we have to have it. You're 100% correct. The thing is, and, and I hate to be that guy that keeps going here, but I'm the bridge. I mean, I'm, I worked with both groups. If you were setting.
Painting the picture, there was a massive shakeup to the council in 2018, right?
A complete.
There were three new elected council people, four new elected council.
Four brand new council people.
Well, okay. Four counting Betsy's.
Well, five now, five now with Betsy. So if you were saying those same things just a couple of years ago, I would be like, amen, brother. But the shift happened. The problem is you don't see the effects of the shift yet because it's going to take a lot of time to dig ourself out of past mistakes. So 100% you're right. However, on the misdemeanor stuff, one thing I can say, and I do know for a fact is our judges, our prosecutor, everyone, uh, in that criminal justice area over the past five years or so, they have been working on how do we get people out of here so that we prevent this overcrowding. And there's a lot of missed, honest, and I don't know this. A lot of people, if they would just show up for court, they wouldn't be in jail. Cause a lot of times, yeah, there's a lot of times there's, there are misdemeanors. There are things that they get arrested for or charged with or cited for. If they would go to court, chances are the judge would work with them. We have three very good judges that are very understandable and understand this community. The problem is they don't show to court. Then they get a warrant. Then they get arrested. Then the snowball happens and it causes a huge, huge problem. Now, as far as building the jail and the new tax, love to start this off because my thing from the very beginning is we needed a new jail. We passed the LOIT tax, public safety LOIT. Because our sheriff department was hurting, they had cut approximately $600,000. That's why we don't have work release anymore. Because they had to cut their budget so thickly a few years ago. So we've been trying to rebound on that. They passed public safety LOIT tax, which is now called lit, right?
It's not an option anymore. It's just required. So it's lit, not an option.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. It only took, again, again, I voted no on this budget. But in the last budget of, excuse me, it's not the last one because we just, we just passed one with the new group. The 2019 budget, I believe it was, that was worked on in 2018. I voted no on that budget. One of the sole reasons was because they took a million dollars, little over of that public safety money and switched money around. So to just raw numbers, just say a million dollars. General fund was paying a million dollars for the sheriff department to operate this way. When the council got ahold of that money, it only took three years. When that was first passed, I was on, I worked with Robin Fleming and I think Harold. We, and what we came up with was kind of a, uh, a three-part split.
The public safety tax was sold to, to everybody as this is for capital improvements, not for.
For public safety purposes. Right.
Police cars, et cetera, et cetera.
We needed, at the time, we needed police cars. We needed, uh, major, uh, remodels on the, on the jail, a roof, things of that nature. I mean, there was one year we spent, I think close to 300,000 just on trying to get the jail.
It was enormous.
Where it wouldn't leak and, you know, to be maintained. So anyways, we agreed and we, what, what was supposed to happen was a portion of that was supposed to be saved into a public safety emergency fund type, because again, we knew the jail was coming. Three years. It's still a frustrating point for me. It took three years, what they did. So you have a million dollars that pays for general fund expenses. What they did is took that chunk out. So now that frees up a million dollars. So they took a million dollars of lit, replaced that chunk of general. So now the sheriff department functions on a million dollars of income tax.
Instead of general.
Instead of general. This, this impact that we just had where people weren't working, I, I don't know what the effect of the income tax is going to be next year. But even if we lose a few hundred thousand, sheriff's department's going to feel that because of the way that they voted to use the money. Knowing that we had a jail coming. Now, here's the frustrating thing on the new jail tax. For, let me, let me answer your question about, do we have money to pay for it? Cause I don't want to forget. Yes. What we fit, if what we figured comes in. So based upon that new jail tax, that figure should, if it comes in the way predicted, uh, and where there was a long process, that should pay for the new jail and that tax, and I know I'm going to get some smiles and laughs, that tax is supposed to sunset in like 21, 22 years. But you are correct. Usually what happens is once it's paid for, there, it's like, we're used to that money. So now will the state allow us to keep that money? I don't know. That's 22 years from now. Maybe one of my kids will be making that decision.
The sad thing about this is that, uh, we're already paying on the jail and they haven't even started on it.
Yeah, there's, there's monies going right now.
Every month.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm, I'm almost done, but I want to say this part because it's on the jail tax. Here's my, my frustrating thing is not that this current council passed the jail tax. Because knowing what I know, I, I saw no other way myself. I did not know how we could fulfill the obligation of the federal lawsuit without some kind of revenue stream. Okay. So that, that's just, it's just is what it is. I looked for several years asking people, what are your ideas? What are your choices? How else can we do this? Uh, had one young man at the, at the, uh, meeting that night, you know, questioning us, raking the council over the coals. And I just asked him, well, what's your idea? Like, what is your solution? We know the problem. What is your solution? And then there wasn't a solution because it was, the answer was, well, I don't know, because I would have to look over the numbers and I would have to look at the forms and the figures. Well, exactly. You would, but guess what? We have. So that, and, and so I'm not trying to get too passionate on this, but I was frustrated that we even had to pass the tax. Because in my opinion, and I have no way to back this up. I have no proof because it's only speculation. I can't go back and correct the past. I feel like had we spent the money a little more efficiently, we used the public safety lit a little more effectively and did some, done some of the stuff we're doing now, back then. The honest truth is we might not even have had to raise that tax.
All right. Let's, uh, let's pivot to Betsy.
With that question?
Yeah, with the same, with the same question.
Jail tax question?
The jail, how, how do you budget it? How do you take care of the new building? Obviously Clay has painted the picture as to how we got to this point.
Sure.
And you, you don't have quite as much time on the council.
Right. And I, I did not have to vote on that tax. That was right before my time. Um, how do you do it as efficiently and effectively for the taxpayer as, as possible? And, and that, what my concern is, and I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but because of COVID and its strain on our budget that we can anticipate, all this becomes much murkier. We've just agreed to this federal lawsuit. We know we have bills coming in and yet we do not, we cannot, it's not just this year that COVID is going to impact. It's years in the future. It's 2021, it's 22, it's 23. I mean, I hope we recover as quickly as possible, but I, I share deep concerns that we, we've just taken out that we, we've just instituted this new tax. We've done all these things recently. We've made all these moves necessary federally required. And yet I worry that we're, I, I mean, I, I just share concerns. So I would say we've got to move really methodically, really strategically. We've got to see how our numbers are coming in and the last thing we want is another tax. No one wants any more taxes. No new taxes. That's what we all want.
I'm not sure you have another lever to pull.
I don't know.
Right. I mean, I'm not sure.
We're scraping the bottom of the barrel already.
I'm not sure there is another tax that you could put in place for that.
There's, you could raise about that much and that's it. I mean, but you're exactly right. I mean, we're, we're, we are just about at the bottom of, of being able to fund all this. And this is why over the past year, again, uh, this council, uh, this new people that, that I've been working with this year. Man, they've been working hard. They've been, we've made cuts to county insurance. I mean, we, they have dug in and started making some changes and digging out some old roots, some old cultural roots.
Roots that go way back to Kentucky. If you listen to the Patreon, you'll get that joke, ballstockofliberty.com slash, uh, or, and look for the Patreon side. Travis, let's, let's talk with you a little bit about the, about the future of the jail.
The future of the jail, like I've said before, is it's a shame that we have to raise a tax for something that we've all seen coming for 10 or 15 years, when we should have been putting money into a rainy day fund to save for that. There's other county buildings that are a necessity, such as, uh, the justice center. Other buildings that we need that are going to need maintenance or replace in the future. And yet we continue to put $0 into a rainy day fund or to save for anything in the future. We just wait till it becomes necessary or a lawsuit tells us we have to replace it and then we'll just raise a tax. Now, as far as the taxes being raised as far as they can go, I don't believe that's necessary because I get a tax raise every year. I bought a tax property out of a commissioner sale for $2,500. I get a tax assessment on it. I get a tax assessment on it at 60,000. Now this year it's raised to 80,000. That's a tax increase without somebody voting on it or anybody doing anything.
Obviously you improve the property $20,000. You're, you're a tycoon.
And we have, and we have several properties. I've linked the counties in possession of approximately 300 or so properties.
More, I've checked.
Need to
Divulge ourselves of, put into private interest.
I agree.
The county only needs the properties that we need to do the people's business. We don't need to own vast estates. We don't need to own the, all these properties that the county has, and then it goes back to the city after that, but that's a whole nother story. But we need to divulge ourselves of these properties and get back to doing the people's business at the lowest interest that we can do it. And without raising taxes and we need to work on eliminating those taxes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and Harold, you may be able to answer this one too, but some of the properties that are owned are, I think designated for future rail projects, like rails to trails, those types, a lot of those parcels.
Areas that are, that, that are non-negotiable. I mean, there's certain areas that are there for like rightaways or specific buildings like the Justice Center, the courthouse.
Yes.
But there are several properties out and about throughout the county that could go up for a commissioner's sale or something like that.
And especially right now, that might be something worth considering as we're struggling to make our bills. I mean, obviously anything that's held strategically for, you know, future purpose would be.
And on that particular issue, I, that is something that once this election's done, we'll see who the commissioners are. That, that was something I was going to bring up to the commissioners. That, hey, we have these properties. What can we do with it? Cause I had a, I had someone tell me, a county employee came to me a couple of years ago when we were looking at the jail and some of these financial issues, and they showed me a list of properties we have. And I personally don't know why we haven't unloaded them to this point. I don't know. But some of them, you're right, we can't.
Some are strategically held for the rail program, but then there are other, I know the commissioners, there's two separate, there's an inventory of properties that are owned by the county. And then there is a separate commissioner's sale, which is item properties that are not having property taxes paid and the commissioners sell. There's a sheriff's sale portion and a commissioner's sale portion. The commissioner's sale is where it goes at not even the money that's owed on property taxes, but just a, almost a basic auction.
Get it back in the hands of the private ownership.
Back onto the tax rolls.
As we consider divesting ourselves of these properties, I would also consider what are the best practices of our peers? What are they doing? Is there a way to do this strategically so that we get it into the hands of people that can make the best use of it, all while recouping our money?
Yeah, yeah, that, and that's important too.
Public auctions are the best way to do that.
What's that?
Public auctions, I believe, are the best way to get these properties back into private hands.
And they do hold those every, I don't know how often, but I know I've been to, at the courthouse for a couple of meetings and we've had to keep quiet while they did a public auction.
It seems like the government has never decided to get rid of personal properties. Sure, they've gotten rid of some of this on the commissioner's sale and whatnot. That's in, and for the tax purposes, but we just seem to keep growing as far as properties accumulate it. We pay taxes on those, maintenance upkeep, and it costs us money. So we need to really get rid of
Get it back on the tax roll would be great.
Absolutely. Get it out of the government hands.
Right. Harold, we, we haven't quite got to you yet as far as the, the jail conversation. I don't want to skip over you. But the, the future of any fund, funding the new building, we know $25 million is probably the, probably the number, but how do you fund that? And how do you pay for the maintenance going forward? I didn't give you an opportunity to answer that.
Well, this jail tax, we came up, was supposed to be doing that. But I have some concerns. I'm afraid that we're going to still have to come up with more money or somebody will someday. Because we're, like I said, we're already paying out. I think it was $7,000 a month to these companies that are going to build it. And, you know, we haven't got, well, we've got some things done, but not as far as the physical building itself. Right now it's architectural bids and stuff, appraisals of the old jail. And we're kind of just sitting back and this money, you know, it worries me. Maybe we'll have a bunch of good councilmen when that day comes that can figure out something. But I wanted to mention, this all comes back to the money we don't have that was cut 10 years ago. Money, money, money. And we've lost a lot of money over those years. I'd say probably, I don't, can't say here for sure, but I know the first five or six years, it was around a million dollars a year off our boat, what we originally were getting.
When you, when you run for state senate?
I couldn't handle that. I'd probably be getting trouble.
And Tom Saunders has spoken to this quite a bit. I mean, Tom is
Tom was the only individual among the legislature that voted against that 1011 bill.
He got a lot of flack for it too, but he was right.
I've got to give him credit to have the, the guts to stand up himself.
That's why, that's why I asked when you're running for state senate, because I knew our state representative voted in the, had your position on it.
This is it.
So in, to put a pin in the, in the jail conversation, at the very beginning, Travis, or Clay said, well, what were the solutions? And in 2018, what I spoke about when I was running for a council seat was that there's an awful lot of power in the bully pulpit of holding the seats that you guys do. And we saw the effectiveness before the pandemic of the Red for Ed conversation. And two of the three main points that the teachers brought were, are expected to be priorities in 2021 in, in public education. If 800 to 1,000 elected officials showed up in January at a state house or February in a state house, and the elected officials, council, council people, sheriffs, commissioners showed up and said, hey, don't make me raise the taxes on my citizens. I think that your office has power to get in the media and to get in the face of the elected officials and say, you guys are sending me the level sixes. You're, Henry County may be different where we, we have a jail that needs to be replaced. But there's a whole lot more than Henry County just building jails in the state. I think that the council commissioners and sheriffs together, auditors as well, if they showed up at the state house and had a rally and got in, in a mass rally, I think there would be an opportunity to have that conversation at the state level and not where the councils are the ones having to just make that, make, make that tax raise.
I love that idea. And it was, yeah, and Red for Ed was deeply, deeply effective. I have to imagine major things would be happening next year. Maybe they still will, but again, pandemic has thrown everything for a loop. But it is tragic because the teachers were getting a lot of momentum and rightfully so.
You made one really good point that we haven't mentioned, that when you're in the work of it, you know, you can't see the forest because of trees sometimes. The level sixes. I mean, when the state changed that Butch Baker was sheriff. And he said, he told us, it's going to sound great at first, but then it's going to become a massive problem for local, local government. And just a couple of years later, it was, it was a massive problem for local government across the state, across the state.
All right, let's, let's move on real quickly at one of the other tools that the council has, and this is going to dovetail into the memorial park conversation. Council gets to vote on bonds. And I want to know from your view, obviously you've got some, you've got an 800 pound gorilla on your shoulders right now. So it may not be a this term conversation, but what would your bonding priorities be as a council person? If you've got projects that you want to bond for, what would they be? The most recent bond that we saw in place was for the expo center. Two million dollar bond, maintenance bond the county used, and a portion of that went to pay for the expo center and what's happening in, in the park now. Previous to that, it was the Justice Center, it was the jail. So that's those, that's the way those tools have been used in the past. You've got one of seven seats. How, what are your bonding priorities? And we'll start with, we'll start with Harold and then we're, yeah.
I would hold off on any more bonds. We, you know, we need to be very careful about this stuff. We're being over ahead. You know, I want to miss Walgo real quickly. Probably you, he had a good point about the rainy day fund. The doggone it went back to that bill 10 years ago. We were running short on money. Well, that's what that's for. I mean, every year, every year we had to fight to stay, keep our head above water. And we would take money from the rainy day fund and put it whatever emergency came up.
Your rainy day fund now has become the bridge fund and borrowing, borrowing from the bridge fund, borrowing from the surveyor, et cetera. And then you have to pay that back by the end of the year, essentially is what's happening. All right. Any bonding priorities for you, Travis?
Yes, as to pay off the existing bonds. Too often the government uses bonds as a, a solution to fund future projects whenever it should be funded by rainy day funds like we was talking about. The memorial park thing in itself, I think, was in excess of county government. We had one of the most popular parks in town. That was ripped up. Now it's a dirt field with light posts. It's being leased out to another entity. The kids can't go play. There's no park there. It's going to be to another hope initiative, expo center or whatever. We have a war memorial museum. We have a statue that was moved. County funds paid to restore a popular statue and move it to a new location. And if I build a story shed, I have to go to the county zoning board and get permission to spend my own dollars. But it seems as though we just spend our county dollars and we never get the people's permission. It's got to change that way. You see, and this has been this way a long time. I'm not blaming local members here. I'm saying this thought has to stop. It has to change. We need to stop spending money on things such as if the expo center is a private development, let it be private. The county unfortunately doesn't have the money to spend on excesses such as airports or expo centers when our roads have potholes the size of swimming pools. I'm afraid to call the county to tell them I have a pothole because last time I did, they came out, brought the excise and charged me to extra taxes for a swimming pool. That's the way this county seems to be going. So my issue on bonds would be stop the bonds, pay off the existing bonds, lower the taxes just a little bit. If we have to raise taxes ever in the future, it should be brought to the people and told specifically what it's going to be used for. Unlike the food and beverage tax, which was brought to them to pay for a hall of fame and then renewed and it never, it never sunsets, never goes away.
Betsy, bonding priorities.
I'm, I didn't think this was going to be the popular answer. I can't think of anything. I would, anything that was brought to us as a council, we, I would like to think we'd consider and research and investigate and really give it an honest review, but we have too many bills to pay. We have too many projects.
Not even the jail, bonding for the jail.
Additional?
Well, yeah. So you've got, I guess, when I, when I'm thinking about this issue, I'm thinking, okay, you've got the, the Justice Center bond is going to come up. So are you going to reuse that fund, those funds to rebond to pay for this new jail? Or where's, that's where the 20, where's the money for this $25 million project come from? I, I'm trying to understand what the, you know, how you guys see it.
Sure. My thought would be, we'll see when we get there. What is our current financial status at that moment? How is COVID beating us up? Where are we? New projects, new priorities? We're already really underwater. We're already, we're going through the wringer right now. We don't need to add more debt to, yeah, I would minimize that as much as possible.
And Mr. Morgan.
All right. So, um, how much time do I have?
Well, it's, it's quarter after nine. We got, we got some more ground to cover. So I, I got a feeling Harold's got to be up with the chicken. So I got, we got to get going.
He does come to the early bird.
So, so bonding, there, there's a few, there's, there's, there's actually three or four different questions within the, your question.
We're complicated around here. You're, you're applying for a very, very high risk job.
Right.
You affect my paycheck every week.
I understand that. And so, so let me, let me answer the Justice Center first. We'll just take them one at a time. The Justice Center bond, you're exactly right. I think around 2024 is supposed to be paid off completely. The talk has been among, and again, I don't know if Betsy's heard much of this or not, but I know the talk has been among the other council members. And the reason I say that is just because she, it's just been the past few months and our priorities have taken us elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
But the talk has been the possibility of, of rebonding, like you said, and creating a mental health drug rehab facility for this area in partnership with another mental health provider or something to that effect. Now, you get, you get, because, you know, here's the thing, on one side, you've got people saying, we don't have anything. And, and I know I've, in the past, I've got a call at like, I don't know, it was early in the morning. Hey, my husband's ready to take the next step right now. What do I do? There was nowhere to send him. Like there was nowhere to call upon in this area. And, and it, that led, in itself led to obstacles and roadblocks. Now, you have the argument. So I am, so I, I, I am a religious man. I'm a Christian man. I'm a faith believer. I, I think that I don't think that just putting someone in a facility is going to, is the cure all, no doubt about it. However, the jail is also probably not the place. And right now that's our go-to, you know, for some of these addictions and some of these mental health issues. We have mental health patients that commit some type of crime. They, they become kind of a dangerous, danger to society in that moment. And so then they're put into a jail around jailers who at no fault of their own are not trained in dealing with mental health issues. And then the problem escalates and then that individual commits a crime while they're in jail. And then all of a sudden you've created a massive problem for that one individual because there was nowhere to divert them to into a safer place for them. Because let's face it, I mean, we all think we, all of us think we're in our right mind and we have it all together, right? But we would all also agree that we know so and so that's not. When the fact is maybe some of us at any given moment could flip our lid, right? But, but so that has been the talk. Long story short, I guess, I've been known to take a long time. But that has been the talk of the possibility of maybe doing something like that where there's a booking process and instead of going into the jail, into general population, they can be diverted into a rehab center or a mental health facility. Then at that point, the, the great thing about that economically is at that point, it's still taxpayer money. I get it. But at that point, the state, right now, the numbers I've heard is the state will pay up to $400 a week for an individual for mental health issues or rehab issues. So if we can take them out of the jail, then we control our population. We don't add to the problem. We don't add to their problem and we divert them into a facility that's more facilitated for their needs. And then it's also cheaper on the county at that point, because then we get state funds, which is yes, still taxpayer money. Now, that's just that, that bond, okay? When we bonded for, go back a few years, cause talking about the park and here's where we get on the park. When we bonded for what ended up going to the Henry County Expo Center. The original intent of that bond was very worthy. At that time, we needed voting machines. Our, our machines were disastrous and people were actually concerned about voter results. So we knew we had to make a move in that direction. To buy the machines we needed was going to cost approximately $800,000. Okay. I think it was just under that. Debbie Walker did a great job facilitating that. But the total bond was about $2 million. So there was roughly a million point two, million point two five that the original intent of the council at that time was to go into the Smith building. Because at that time, the Smith building was leaking profusely. If you remember, they had tarps on the inside catching water funneling it down to a 55 gallon trash bucket.
So the bond, the bond was $800,000 for voting equipment and 1.2 million for improvements at Memorial Park.
At Memorial Park. Well, right. So the way it was worded in the bond, see, the council passes the bond and the commissioners sign it after it's worded. So the council's intention was it to go to the Smith building because it was in extreme need of repair. And at that point, if we let it go, you would end up having to tear it down eventually. I mean, it was just to that point. But, but someone mentioned 4H because the 4H barns are right beside it. It's like, well, okay, let's see what we can do because they were in need. You, you know yourself, being involved in 4H. There was a need there. So it was like, okay, can we do some kind of partnership here? So they drilled the ground and decided we, you cannot build a new structure on this site because there was so much water underneath it. All right. You could actually go in the basement of the Smith building and there was an area where you could see water flowing underneath the floor. So because we couldn't build on that site, all of a sudden somehow very quickly, a million point two dollars of taxpayer money. a million point two dollars of taxpayer money was going to fund a Henry County Expo Center that was going to be privately controlled on county ground. I went, I, I, right off the bat, that didn't set well with me because all of a sudden we're talking over a million dollars of taxpayer money. That's all of a sudden being shifted to a project that needs three to four million to be complete. But at that time, all they had was the seed money from the taxpayers for an expo center, which at that time we had a jail issue. And we had, then we knew a lawsuit coming, but let's take a million dollars. You get where I'm going. I'll stop at that point right there. Cause it's still a frustrating point with me. It's not that it's a bad idea. I just, I think the money went sideways really fast. At, I wasn't happy about that. And so at a council meeting, uh, as I was coming down to take my seat, Commissioner Cronk, that spearheaded that whole project on the county side, had the bond paper turned, which is, you know, about like that, turned to the exact page, pointed to the exact line where it said Memorial Park Structures. And I just looked at him and said, I know Kim, you got me. It's out of the council's hand at that point. So three years later, four years later, three years later, I'll, I'll give the benefit of the doubt. Three years later, we still, we paid, the taxpayer paid to, to flatten the earth for the Henry County Expo Center. I'm not, it's not that I'm like all out against the project, but I have some questions. And I addressed them from the very beginning when we had a park board, council, commissioner meeting, the Smith building was packed. I have a picture of it where, where, um, Kathy Hamilton, who, who I think is a great person, was right there looking at me and I'm looking at her. I'm asking a question. This is a $3 million building going on county property. We already struggle maintaining the property that we have. Our park is already in need of repair and in need of, and, and even the lawn. We were even struggling with mowers, paying for gas, the simple things.
Still are.
That people don't really see. And I, and I said, how are we going to facilitate a $3 million building? When we can't even do a very good job maintaining what we have. And I said, then if you, you have to hire someone, an event planner, you have to hire someone to maintain the building. You can't build a $3 million building and just let it set. How are we going to function? The only answer was, and I know you've got people out there listening probably, I, I know there's people out there that love this project, that absolutely hate me. Because, and, and they've said I've been a big reason that they can't get any money because I'm so negative about it. Show me something. I mean, we, there has not been any communication. Now I will give them this, we are supposed to in our June council meeting, hear a report about where they stand. But it's been three years. We, we don't know where they're at. They used a million dollars, over a million dollars of property tax money to go to a project. We haven't heard back on it. It's been hush, hush. There's no communication. I don't know what's going on. And then if, if it gets built and it can't maintain, then who pays for it? And I said this in that meeting, the only, you took, you walk that dog down that path and the bowl it eats out of is it's on the back of the taxpayer. Because it's setting on county property. My solution, and I'll say it right here, if I would be 100% just fine. And, and maybe, maybe somebody will correct me because I'm not thinking of something, but sell them the property for a dollar, whatever. I don't know. You know what I mean? Get it out of county hands. Let it be a private function. So that whatever happens there in the future is not put back on the county taxpayer.
So right now that area is, is under a, uh, a long-term lease essentially. The ownership is by the county, but there's.
I forget how many years it was. Do you remember?
I want to say 75, but I could.
I was gonna say it was long.
As I understand, a lot of the 4H parents and farmers also give donations toward that out there.
Yeah.
For the children. I don't have a real problem as far.
There are some.
The cause for it. We got to have things for the children and I understand that. Keep my trouble and these kids in 4H are good kids because they were brought up first of all, right? And I have nothing wrong with that. I'm just wondering how much is going to be, you know, left that's going to have to be paid. But I don't know what the figure is or what's still owed on the property.
So let's, let's, we've kind of pivoted from the, from the bond question into Memorial Park, which is a good, which is a good thing.
Yeah. And it's part of the bond. And I, I can walk, I can keep walking that dog on the bond itself. Because we, it, we just paid it. We just, we just paid for it. So that bond is gone. But that million dollars is gone. And 4H is, 4H is great, but here's the problem. Here's, from what my understanding, again, I say things, I, I shoot off at the mouth sometimes, right? And if I'm corrected, I'll stand corrected. I have no problem with being wrong, but I've asked around for people in 4H. And there are people who have told me that from the beginning, 4H was used basically to put a stamp on it so that those funds could be used in functioning with a private entity.
So Memorial Park is, we've talked about this in the, in the commissioner's series, the last two weeks, it's a very complicated, there's a number of stakeholders. So the, the group that's developing the building is the Henry County Expo Center, a 501, independent 501(c)(3). 4H is a program, a federal program administered through Purdue Extension and, and there is membership of kids in the county.
Right.
So 4H is expected to be one of the tenants of the expo center, but it's a long-term, year-round.
And actually the building is going to be used for several different purposes if they need to. An all-purpose building really, uh, entertainment, uh, weddings, uh, you know, all kinds of.
If they can get there, if that vision is realized, it's going to be, it will help with economic development.
Yeah. I promise I'll shut up after this. I just got to say this and I, I'll sit back and I'll let everybody else talk about it. But this has been a hot button issue with me for years because it's still nothing happening. And we've raised taxes to build a jail. But you know what I mean? Here's the thing. If it's used, if it's used, that would be great. We have multiple facilities around here that can be rented out for different events and, and things like that. If it's used.
All right. So let's, let's, let's work to Betsy and around the room here on Memorial Park, the future. There's been a lot of decisions made over the last 10 to 15 years of, of investments and priorities in the park. How does Councilwoman Mills view Memorial Park in the future? Obviously you've got a, a, a project that's not complete yet in the expo center. You've got a negotiation underway with the veterans group. You've, there's been a lot of conversation and we're moving into the hundred year celebration of Henry County's Memorial Park.
Sure. Um, I'll, I'll just talk big picture here. Um, we all care deeply for Memorial Park. It is in my mind, one of the crown jewels of Henry County and the purpose it serves, um, the honor it pays to our service members. And those fallen, I think is incredible. I just think that is so, so cool and such a, uh, an opportunity to teach our young people about sacrifice and honor and our military and our legacy. And, um, it's, it's amazing. It's, it's such a cool asset for our county. As a park board liaison, I've learned a lot about, uh, more about the nitty gritty of the park and what's going on. I think this year we have hired a fabulous superintendent. I'm very excited for Tracy and her vision. I think we have a park board too that has a lot of vision and I'm, I've been excited to work with them. We have a lot of people who work out at the park and that the way it looks right now, there's, it's, I'm just excited for its future. And I hope that we can get it, continue to move in the right direction. And I hope we can continue utilizing it as one of our crown jewels. As far as the expo center goes, it's complicated. I, I really hope it works out. I'm, I'm rooting for the best for everyone because we have sunk a lot of tax money into this taxpayers' money. If, if we can get there, and I know a lot of people who think we can and are really fired up for it and, and I don't disagree with that. I just, honestly, I, I don't know enough about it. So the June meeting that we're expected to hear this report on the latest, I'll be eagerly anticipating that because I want to know where we're at with it. For me, I'm very interested in economic development. I'm interested in, uh, travel and tourism. How can we bring money into the county? Not by raising taxes, but how can we bring other people into the county for them to spend their money here and support our local businesses? So, um, along those, along those lines, I'm excited for the future of the park. There's a lot of good projects going on right now. Uh, I know a lot of people are really fired up. A lot of the staff out there are really excited. Uh, I think this meeting, our, our council meeting, uh, on Thursday, we may be talking a little bit about a funding request and, um, I don't know. We'll see. I'm excited, but I think, I think at this point I'm also pensive and I'm also reserved because I know the budgets we're going to have to be setting soon. And I know that we're just, it's just going to look, this landscape is completely different now. And so it's hard to get too excited about things because we're broke. We were already broke. We're super broke as a county. It's getting worse and worse by the day. Even though our tax revenues are coming in really well, our treasurer, Bill Upchurch says that we're doing much better than expected, but COVID is going to hammer us for years. So.
But what was expected was $4 million in the hole.
Right, 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 right. So now we might be one million, one or $2 million. That's great. So.
Yeah. And on the park issue, like you said it and you said it, I just want to make it very clear. The park is an extremely complicated situation right now. So when I talk about the park, I'm not talking about expo center. When I'm talking about expo center, I'm not talking about the park. Because there's two distinct groups there.
You truly, we've talked about this previously on the show and we're going to get to Travis, but you have so many stakeholders out there, right?
Right, right.
The Henry County Saddle Club is, is an independent 501(c)(3) that has a long-term lease.
Right.
The Veterans Museum is, or that veterans group is going to be leasing the downstairs of the Smith building. That's an independent organization. The county park board manages everything else. The, the expo center board has their parcel.
Right.
Out in the park. And then there's also a friends group, which is the financial fundraising arm, uh, for the county-controlled park section because they are unable to raise money.
Right.
It, because they're a taxpayer organization.
Right.
So it's, it's extremely complicated and there's a bit of an alphabet soup of trying to understand how each of these different groups fit together. So I.
It's been such an education for me as a liaison, learning about all these different groups, all these different players, all these different funds. It is ridiculously complicated.
So Travis, you want to dip into this?
Yeah. I say we just simplify the matter. Number one on the, uh, expo center, I think the expo center is a great project for a private organization. If it don't make dollars, it don't make sense. It would be a better location out on 70 or out on three, close to 70. Any other location, but what we have here is a county park that was always the, one of the most popular county parks. It belonged to the people. Had one of the most popular playgrounds. People loved it. It was flat. It was easily accessible. You could have a small picnic while you watched your grandkids play out here on the rides. It, it was very, very popular. Now what we have is it sold off to a private organization. So now you say, well, let's give it to them for a dollar to get it out of county hands. At that rate, we get about 13 bucks for the whole park.
Yeah. And it, it's, it, it wouldn't be for investment purposes. It would just be to try to correct what.
I understand.
Could be a mistake.
And what I say is, you say, look, we made a mistake. Let's put the playground back. Let's, let's do us right. Make the park back belonging to the people again.
At this point though, you've got, they've got a long-term lease. You can't break a 75 year lease at this point.
Well, if they don't uphold their part of the lease to build the expo center as they said they were going to do, I believe there should be some outs on this lease. If we just gave them an unending lease for 75 years on whatever, then the fools are on us. So I would like to lease the other half of the park to grow tomatoes. But I'm just saying, we need to bring this park back. Let's just admit a mistake was made. Bring the park back to the people. Let the kids enjoy it again. And don't make the park have to make, uh, you know, the park is for the county. It's always been that way. You take your kids out, you play, you have a little picnic or whatever. It's something that people didn't mind paying for because they, they use it. Everybody used it. Didn't matter if he was rich or poor, whatever. You went out to the park. So.
We are still using it though, right? I mean, I know the playground was displaced, but I, I, it's being utilized as much as ever.
Less and less. That's where the park and the expo center area.
Sure.
Too separate. The park is doing, there's a lot of activity at the park. Yeah.
But to get to that park, the, the older park, what they call the older park.
Right.
To get to it, it's a long walk. It's down a hill. It's, it's, it's not as easy to access as the old, as the new park was, the ones that we tore out.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
Yes. To get there, if you have somebody such as my mother that's in a wheelchair or has a hard time walking with a walker, it's very hard to get down to that, to the old park area. The park where the expo center is, where it's situated right now was very easy. You, you drove right up to it. You could walk right out on flat grant, ground. It was very popular with everybody in the county. And now all we have is a chunk of dirt with light poles stuck out of the ground that the kids can enjoy. I saw some ducks trying to make their way across it. Pretty soon we're going to just kind of, hey, put in a token, see a duck. If we're going to privatize the entire park, let's just privatize it, be done with it. It was popular by the people because the people loved that park. It's been used for many years. So my solution would be turn the park back over to the people. Just admit we, a small mistake was made. But rectify the mistake. Don't continue to pay into a mistake just because we made a mistake. That's what it was my last marriage.
I will say on the, the expo center, I know you keep bringing up the playground that was, that's dismantled. Uh, they do plan to put in a one or two ADA accessible playgrounds back that are actually up to date, that people in wheelchairs are able to actually get to and play with and that disabled children can actually get there. I know that is part of the plan as well.
The doors will not be owned by the park. They'll be under that lease area. So.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll be, it'll be under the expo. The expo will, will pay for that.
So if the expo wanted to, they could put a gate around it and say, we're only open from eight to five, we're closed on Sunday. What I'm saying is it doesn't belong to the people. The people don't have a right to be there because it's leased to a private entity. So right now the people have a right. You can show up at the park that belongs to you. That's your tax dollars. You can show up at the park. You can stay there till the park closes at nine. You can say, me and my family are having a private picnic. Once we lease it to private entities such as expo center, they have a right to say, we're closing on Wednesdays. We're going to close it at five o'clock. We're gonna, we don't care if you want a curly slide, whatever. I'm just saying this belongs to the people and I think it was very popular.
Harold.
Well, it's my understanding they're going to be showing animals over there too. I don't know exactly how it's going to be set up. The old area where they were showing and keeping the animals is about to fall down. It's real dangerous. They have a lot of bad leaks and, uh, that is going to come down. Apparently that was another reason why they wanted to build that over there. At first I heard they might have it down below. Have you heard anything?
I, I don't know. There, there hasn't been very good communication. There just hasn't for the past two or three years. But you are correct. That's why they, um, that's why, that's what kind of gave birth to that whole project is because the current 4H facilities were in bad condition and even dangerous.
So just to help paint a little bit of the picture here, the, the conversation as, as Clay said, started with, hey, remodel the Smith building, expand the Smith building. Park board hired a, a company, I think it was called Steel Core. They came out, came up with some drawings to expand the Smith building that would have replaced the existing 4H facilities that are there. Steel Core's result came back and said, hey, we can't fix this building. We recommend doing this. They did their soil samples. They dug in, said, actually this ground isn't suitable. That conversation then pivoted, which brought the expo center and the Hope Initiative getting involved. That's another group that has been involved in this that I, we didn't fully converse in.
They've done a lot of work in the county.
The, this, the expo plan came into place. That was, has been started at this point. And ultimately I think they're supposed to leave with an ADA playground and to remove the existing 4H buildings and turn that back into green space for the park.
Just a little tidbit I was going to add. I remember showing hogs in that old, uh, livestock barn and keeping them there. I hate to say this. This is about 60 years ago. That building's been there.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And, and that's the thing. It, the idea in and of itself.
It made it longer than the jail.
Exactly. And, but, and I've said this from the very beginning, again, I, there are, I know I've caused some waves because of my feelings on it. It's not that it's such a bad idea, but it's, it was a very ill-placed as far as timeline.
You're questioning how it got to the top of the priority list.
So quickly because we've been 10 years. At that point, we were at least 10 years saying, we need, we need, we have problems at the jail and we are going to put at risk our county. We're going to put them at risk for a federal lawsuit. But then like that, a $3 million, $4 million project was going to go up using. a $3 million, $4 million project was going to go up using 1.2 million dollars of property tax money. Just like that. And you bring up the jail. Well, we'll get there. And then guess what? We did. And we raised taxes again to do it.
All right. So the, the last item that I wanted to cover, because I know we're running really long at this point, the council also.
Two hours and 10 minutes.
95%, 95% of, oh, Clay's here and this is what happens. 95% of the council's responsibilities are financial.
Certainly.
But we'll say another 5% is, is tied to land use. The council has an appointment to the planning commission. So the council has in, influence over how, how the land in Henry County gets used as well. So I want to hear from the council members as to how you view that one, one in seven of the council people ends up serving on the planning commission. Previously it was, Betsy, it was, I'm sorry. Previously it was.
Anish?
No, I'm sorry. On the council side. Robin, Robin Reno Fleming served in that position. And now Kenan Gray, County, Kenan Gray has it. I guess we'll start with Harold and give you a chance to talk about land use. I know a number of hot topic issues have come up there in the past, dealing with KFOs. We've, we talked in the past about the scorecard system that's in place. I'm not sure how much conversation goes into land use from the council, or if it's, hey, once a year, you guys make your appointment and that's the last that gets spoken of. I wanted, I want to hear from that because often the, the wind issue and others get wrapped up into the council race. I want to, I want to hear how each of you view land use in Henry County for the next four years and the 5% of your job that goes into that.
Yeah, really. We, that's got harder. Fine. Granted, there are several important issues that go through there. You also have a chairman over the council, the planning commissioner, I think it's Jacobs.
The zoning, the administrator.
Yes, administrator. There's some pretty serious decisions made on there. And you mentioned one of them was the wind turbines and the coal poole farms. Fortunately, we haven't had a whole lot to do with that. As far as I can recall, they basically handled most of that, as far as I remember, on various issues. Now, it might eventually get to us if there's a tax abatement necessary for whatever it is, like for instance, wind turbines, then we have to make a decision if they want a tax abatement. We have to make the decision and we vote on it. Considering Calpine, they never came to us. Guess they didn't need it. Actually, that's about, as far as I know, probably the bigger 60 that we're involved in.
All right, Travis.
When it comes to county land use, I believe that individual property owners have a right to do whatever they want to do with their own property. Now that right ends once it hits the edge of their property. If you want a wind turbine, no problem. As long as it doesn't cast a shadow on your neighbor's property, as long as he doesn't have to deal with the noise. Who's to say that you, whatever. So appointing the people to the land use is a big deal. You can't just cast one vote and say, this is the way everything's going to be. Things have to be looked at individually. Like I said, I believe in strong personal property rights. Everybody has a right to do with what they want on their own property. They pay taxes for that purpose. They support the local government. So who are we in turn to turn around and say, no, you can't do this, or you need to do that? So that's where I stand on, on the whole planning commission.
So if you were elected to be a council person, would you be interested in being the representative to the planning commission?
Absolutely.
Okay. Betsy?
Um, I think Kenan Jobs done a, Ken, Kenan Job, Kenan Gray has done a heck of a job on the planning commission. I think he is so well researched and detail oriented. I've been very impressed with him as a colleague. He really, he dotted his i's, he crosses his t's. He really, he really does the honest work and it's been a pleasure to work with him. I thought his performance at Bundy Auditorium last July during the hearing for Calpine and Big Blue River, their, their project for Harrison, Jefferson and Fall Creek Townships for the wind project. I thought Kenan as representative of the council did an outstanding job. I also think it's been really nice to have peace in our county for a few months where we haven't been arguing over wind. It's been honestly a relief that we could talk about issues that seem more pertinent. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't think wind is dead in our county. I don't. I think honestly expect Calpine to return this summer, asking again for building permits. I also think as members of council, we don't have a lot of say on wind, but as far as abatements go, it's not a job creator and I wouldn't vote for it. Additionally, I think the vast, vast will of the county is that we not interrupt our landscape, our health and our economic development with wind projects. So, I mean, I think everybody knows where I stand on that, but as far as council, we don't get a lot of say. You know, it's all about abatements. I think in general, it's good policy to listen to the will of the people and the people have spoken really clearly. I also think as Travis alluded to, it's important to be a good neighbor. And what I love about living here, why I chose to live here and Indiana in general is that Hoosiers are good people. And I'd like to think we're really neighborly. We treat people the right way. We try to anyway. We're not perfect, but it's an expectation of our culture. And personally, I, I think that we need to consider the spirit of projects. Going back to the original question of, do I want to be on that committee? I'd serve anywhere I thought I could, I could help and I could be a talent or bring my talents to that. Kenan's doing a great job. So until he's ready to do something different, I say we let him at it.
I, one thing real quick. The only thing I think you're not being a good neighbor when you place a wind turbine 1,500 feet from the foundation of your home. Everybody's entitled to get what, if they want them, fight for them, claim them. This thing has gone on and on. And the courts as well as the different planning commissioners turned it down and they just keep going and going. And the Indiana State Legislature passed that special bill for, it was Godfathered counties or towns in Henry County. There was a several of them. They Godfathered it. It was part of a bill that passed and went through his law and they still want to fight it.
We worked very hard on that.
Yeah.
We worked, I was down the state house a lot last year.
And it's the only thing that bothers me. You know, you go to, some sense is greed and you go to the Bible and see what greed says.
All right, Clay. Land use.
On, on plan.
Do you want to, do you want to serve on the planning commission and what are your views on land use?
I do not. No, but I mean, I think everybody said it. The council really doesn't have much to do with it other than a representative. And then that person reports to the council, kind of keeps us informed of what's going on. And the only time we do get involved is if an abatement comes out of that permit or whatever the case may be. So the commissioners have a lot more say when it comes to land use. And they have a lot more say in working with the planning commission. It's really kind of a, it, it serves as an advisory board in most capacities to the commissioners, not the council. But the council is given that representative. And then beyond that, so you know, it's appointed and as you know, various rules apply on who can apply and who fills what seats. And then they act as advisory to the commissioners. So as far as the council perspective, I think Kenan's doing just fine. And you know, he, he's definitely thorough. I mean, he definitely digs in there. But it, it is what it is. I, I think things are going fine. I think we have a, a good commission together. I think, I think that whole area is, is doing pretty well. And if you look at the numbers, it, it does provide a lot of revenue for the county.
All right. With that, I think we're at the end of our scheduled, our scheduled program. This is the time for final thoughts where we can bat a little bit of cleanup. Everybody gets a, a last chance at at, at the apple here. If there's anything we forgot, we'll start with Zach, work our way over to Chris, and then we'll finish up with the candidates. So Zach, we'll, we'll go to you and then we'll work our way around the room.
Just remembering from the last couple of meetings, I know that decoded estimates just two and the council requesting the resignation of the current coroner. Did you guys have any thoughts on that? Like what, or explanation?
So I'll, I'll go first, not because I like to talk, but because I made the motion. Plain and simple. First I'll say, yes, there is history that goes back. If you talk to, I gotta be really careful. I'll say there's history. Yeah, yeah. There's history that goes back and, and there's a lot of people out there that know exactly what I'm saying. What was the final straw was that we currently have a candidate for that position that has served in that position in the past. Extremely well-liked, extremely thorough when he did the job. He's ready. And when our current coroner chose to leave the county to take another job for 90 days, three hours away. To me, that was the last straw. Our responsibility is to watch over the finances to make sure they're properly, properly spent, the most effective and efficiently as we see fit, to protect that and honor that. I thought it was unfair to the county taxpayer that we continue to pay him his salary, which is not much. I think it's only about 16,000 a year.
19.
19? There you go. 19,000 a year. To go to another county, three hours away and get a paycheck from that job five days a week, three hours away. And to prove my point, we did get a concern from a, a chief of police from one of our smaller local areas. Said, hey, just wants you guys to know what happened. We had a death on the Henry County side. And they told, explained the, what happened as far as how they pursued that death or, you know, dealing with that death. The coroner from Hancock County had to come and deal with that death that happened in Henry County. Because our coroner was out of town. He was called, he knew, he was contacted, but he passed it off. And said, well, it needs to do this first. So that chief of police did what the coroner had requested. And the person they talked to said, no, it's the coroner's responsibility to do X, Y, and Z. They called back. He's three hours away. So they call a guy across county lines. He's there in 10, 15 minutes, deals with the situation. That's not fair to the taxpayer, right? Ever since I've been in that office, I've been upfront. I've been honest. I've been clear. I've been above board. If I don't like it, I'll tell you I don't like it. If it passes, we'll go on and, and we'll drink coffee and smile. But that's not fair. And that's not right. And he, in my opinion, abandoned his post, abandoned his duty. And we can't do anything about that, but that was the last straw for me. And I just wanted to make a public statement to make. The coroner's position is a position that most people don't know what, where they're at, at whatever time of day or night. They, it's not much interaction unless it's one of the worst days of your life and the death of a loved one. Those are the people who knows what's going on.
Oh my goodness. I also serve as the coroner liaison. So my liaison assignments this year have been, they've been interesting.
That's why you got them.
I know. I, I kind of wonder that. I, I want to be really careful how I speak about this because we're speaking about a man that he's a resident of our county. He's an elected official. I don't want to speak ill of anybody. It's, it's a complicated situation and I'll acknowledge this. If I could go back in time, and please don't be offended Clay, but if I could go back in time, I think the day that we voted to ask for his resignation, I would have maybe we should have had a conversation first. I think maybe we did it out of order. Just my perspective, I would have preferred to have the conversation first, but I also voted for the resignation. We did it unanimously because of the information in front of us and information I'd had. I've received more information since then. I, if the taxpayers knew what I knew, I think they would be entirely, they would be pleased with our actions. And that's, a lot of that's really private and I'll just leave it there. But I will say this. It's costing our county money for our coroner not to be here during the pandemic. And when we voted for this, which was what, six, seven weeks ago? I mean, the pandemic was also looking very different. The projected cases and deaths we expected in the county were going to be so much more than anticipated.
I don't believe we hit the anticipated peak at that time.
Absolutely not. I mean, we haven't been real loud about those numbers because those numbers frankly were horrifying. We honestly, it feels like a miracle that we haven't been more impacted in Henry County. And maybe that's a really, that's a reflection of our health department and their good work and leadership and proactive ordinances. I don't really know. For Mr. Hacker to be out of town during the pandemic and not able to respond to calls, it costs money for deputies to be dispatched. We're spending money in other ways. Sorry, I keep moving away from the microphone. Just from the fiscal perspective, which is in our wheelhouse and is in our, is our job. It's costing us, us money while he draws a salary and I don't fault him for wanting to work out of county.
Absolutely not.
He should do whatever he needs to do, but we, we do need an active coroner during a moment of crisis, during an emergency. So I, I guess that's as simple as I can put it.
On that topic, I believe that if there's an elected official that's making $16,000 a year, I was remised to say that, first of all, they ran for the office knowing it pays $16,000 a year. So we're going to have to get by on that. Second of all, we know that they have deputy coroners to perform these duties when they're not available. But I don't see a role in a county council in demanding the resignation of any other elected official. That's not a duty of a county council. I, we would just as well demand that Trump just resign. It holds no weight. It holds no bearing. It's a personal opinion as far as each person goes. But the council as a whole has no binding. That's not their job to demand resignations from other elected officials. That's the voters. That's my opinion.
You are correct, but it is our job to protect the finances. And because of the situation, it does negatively impact the finances of the county. That is our responsibility. And because he was a part of that negative outcome, it was just simply requested that we would prefer him to go ahead and resign if he needed to take another job.
Or return to the county.
For financial purposes or return to the county.
Right.
Because we have to have an active coroner.
So there was never a thing to say.
We do not have any money to pay the deputy coroner that is currently keeping that office together. He is doing it on his own free will.
Let's hire him through Newcastle Main Street. With the grant money, we could pay the assistant coroner because Newcastle Main Street would be paying him through that grant money.
Right. And that's how it works.
Right. But I'm just saying that I just don't feel the council has any position, even if somebody requested that they asked for his resignation. I don't think that's the county council's job. That's not what they're in it for. They're the financial.
Right. Our job is to protect the taxpayer.
Totally understand.
Right.
But we have deputy coroners for that reason. I'm saying, I just thought that the whole situation could have been handled better. Maybe say, look, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We need to keep a coroner here. He took a job knowing it pays 16,000 a year. Maybe he'll have a side job. Maybe we offer him a little stipend, you know, a little extra money to stay here, whatever the case being.
Why would we do that when we've already, when he chose the salary that he ran for? I mean.
That's what I said at the beginning. He, he ran for the job knowing what the salary was.
Right.
But like I said, I just don't think the county council has any position on asking any elected official to resign. That's just, that's not a job I see the county council having anything to do with.
Yeah. Well, I would disagree because we are citizens also and we are financially responsible for the county.
That's what I said. Individually, I could see it. You could come out individually, but a council as a whole to go together and vote that another elected official, you know, it's like Betsy Mills here. She works for State College. I've worked there. I installed their whole wireless system in the football field.
Sure.
So let's say you had to leave and you had to miss a council meeting. That's happened. Now.
I've missed a couple of council meetings in my seven years.
That doesn't mean that some other body, the commissioner should get together and say, well, we demand his resignation.
No, not for one meeting.
Not for one meeting, but I'm just saying it's, it's, you're an elected official. That's up to the voters.
If I took a job out of this county for three months.
Three hours away.
I, three hours away especially. Yeah. I mean, it's not like I'm working in Hancock County. If I took a job that far away and was going to miss three in a row, I would feel completely obligated to make sure I got back to fulfill my duties.
Yes, thank you. But if you don't, it's no other body, elected official to demand your resignation. It's up to the voters. This is the way I feel.
Definitely. They could definitely request that.
It would mean nothing.
No.
But I'm just saying.
And it means nothing that we did it other than educating. And it means nothing that we did it, other than educate the public on what's going on.
Right. I just felt that should have been done. That should have been done on a personal level. That's my feelings.
Well, that, right. And that's the problem with government sometimes is things are done under the table, behind closed doors, and nobody knows exactly what the public officials are doing.
Oh, that's, that's the case most of the time. I just don't think that.
So you agree that that should have happened?
No, I just said that the council shouldn't have took a stance as a council. Each individual member could have came out and said, I feel this man as an elected official should resign, but the council has no.
We could have done it as individuals, even though all seven could have done it individually, but together as a team, protecting the taxpayer, protecting the county's finances.
Not really protecting, from what I see, the deputy coroners have paid $75 a call.
It's 75.
Let's say they're called out every day.
And we have enough for 30 calls.
Okay. Let's say we have enough for 30 calls. My point is, last week, we give $150,000 of food and beverage.
Again, that shows you don't know how county taxes work.
Counties work. My point is, if we paid off the bonds from the food and beverage tax, if we pay those bonds off, let that tax sunset, we could therefore raise another tax without any offset to the, to the taxpayer, is my point. To spend on what we want. We just continue to raise taxes on this that can only be spent for this. We do a bond, we're going to take out another bond.
Off in another subject. It sounds good, but it shows you don't know exactly how it works yet.
All right. You're right. I ain't been in the government 20 years.
Let's work over to Harold real quick to, to finish this, this part of final thoughts on, on the coroner topic.
Yeah. One of the things I heard, I felt was probably the most important was the fact the county nurse was pretty upset over this. She really found him being the main coroner. He should have been here. I.
Absolutely.
You know, and I didn't know about the situation that Clay brought up about, was it death in another county or?
It was a death in Henry County and it was the chief of police of that area that was bringing it to our attention.
Yeah. That's about all I have to say.
Balls near court on final thoughts.
That was his final thought.
I know, but I mean, that's, that was a good explanation. I do think, I kind of see where, some jobs are weird. And that's obviously one, if it's paying $19,000 a year.
Well, that's not considered full time.
That's not a full time job. So you can have another job, but.
Yeah.
I do see if you take that job, like, I mean, I know, I know a local elected official that chose to move and he tried really hard. Aaron Dickin worked really hard to stay in the ward that he was currently representing because he's like, I got elected to represent these people. So if you get elected to be the coroner for Henry County, you have some responsibility to like be in Henry County for more than maybe 36 hours in a week. I don't know if he's coming home on the weekends or something like that. So I mean, I do see some situation where even if it's symbolic, I, I'm okay with the council saying, if you're not going to be here, maybe you should resign. We have another guy who's done your job before. He can step in tomorrow and he knows everything that's going on. So I kind, I kind of see both sides of that. So, but thanks for answering that question so thoroughly.
All right. So I guess it's coming to me. I don't, I don't really have any big final thoughts here. I'm just going to say thank you all for running. I ran last year. I know how hard it is and it sucks if you lose, but it, it's, it's very rewarding. You get to meet people, you get to talk to people, you get to find out bigger issues that you didn't know about, or maybe find out things work a little bit different than you thought they did. And even if you don't win, and I've learned this, even if you don't win, some of your talking points will still get carried through to the meetings. So as, as long as your voice gets heard, doesn't matter whose name signs the paperwork.
Right.
And there are more ways to serve than just elected office. I, I found that out last time. I, I lost in 2018. It was a four-way race, district three council. I lost by 32 votes. It sucked, but something I'll give you guys credit for is you, you immediately were like, hey, don't give up, don't disappear, stay involved. We need you. And, and it was really nice. It really meant a lot to me. Other people said it too, but people, for people who have ideas, who are passionate, we need you. Doesn't mean we have to agree on everything, but we need ideas. We need people who are passionate. We need people who are willing to act and I, anybody willing to throw their hat into the ring, they're, they're good in my book.
So Betsy, final, final thoughts, last, last chance at the, at leading the conversation here. A final pitch, how people get involved. You got one week left in the campaign.
Sure. This campaign season's been absolutely wild. If you can even call it a campaign season, I think for me personally, I've been so devoted on learning and doing the job. You, you've heard me talk about some of my assignments. It's been incredibly labor intensive. There are some weeks I put in 80, 90 hours and that's not an exaggeration. Ask my family. It's, it's been true. I would say, I know I've just joined council. I've only been around for five months, but I feel like my work has shown. If you ask my colleagues, if you talk to me, you look at the impact of what the council's done lately. We've done very well. I'm very, very proud of it. I'm proud to serve. I'm proud of how accessible I've been to every department head, every constituent, anybody who's called on me. I, I'm, I'm proud to serve. I'm, I'm humbled to serve and I'm really hoping for another term to continue serving the county and bringing new ideas, bringing passion, bringing energy, continuing to set this ship right. So I guess that's it.
Very good. Clay?
Yeah. So just want to say again, there's a week left and you know, this whole time I've thought, okay, here's another campaign. What do you do? You know, I know the typical things to do. Pandemic sits in and you know, everything gets thrown off. You know, I don't think, honestly, I don't think any of us have a lot of signs out there. It's things like this, the newspaper.
Oh, I've seen signs.
That gives us, there is a few, but that gives us an outlet to express ourselves. And two things, one, for me, you know, I have, I've served two terms. I mean, I've, as far as I remember, I've been who I am the whole time. And that's, that's, you know, gained, gained me some support from some that I didn't even have in the beginning. And so they, they, the voters know, if they know me, they know who they have. So, and if they don't like me or the way I think or do things, then I wouldn't expect them to vote for me. It comes down to that. You either, you know what I mean? And as far as some of the things Travis was saying, it's like I said, I, some of the things he was, he was passionate about, I, I'm right there. I mean, those were the exact things that got me involved in the first place. And on the jail issue, some of the park issues, some of those things, you're exactly right. The ball was dropped, but thank God we picked it up and thank God we're moving forward now. So I'm very happy about that. I would love the opportunity to, to work four more years with this group of council members right now. And I think with what we've done in the past year, almost year and a half, I think we'll see the fruit of that down the road. Maybe when, when I'm out of that office, it may take time, but I would love the opportunity to work with these people. So.
All right. Let's pivot over to Travis, the closing comments on your side.
Thanks for having me here.
Absolutely. All right. No volunteer donate to the campaign, any of that stuff?
Nope. I didn't ask for any donations to run the campaign. I'm out, I actually do my own work on the side. I support my own campaign. I have had a couple of people just voluntarily donate to the campaign, but I don't think that's the way to get there by saying, I want to save your money, give me money. So I, it's ran a low key campaign and has been a crazy year with COVID. So.
Right. All right. And Harold?
All through the years, my number one thing was to serve the people, not myself. And as I mentioned earlier this evening to you guys, you know, you, you've got to take them into consideration because that's your job. It's not what I want, it's what they want. And that's the way I've always looked at it. I go out and survey people before a big vote if I know ahead of time it's coming. And I usually try to most generally go with the majority. And like I said, there's been times I've actually voted for something that I didn't want, but that was what the people wanted, your constituents. You can't be selfish. You've got to be out there to help them and not yourself. And I'm very fortunate. Enjoyed it.
Well, very good. I want to thank all of the candidates for joining us tonight. This is, this has been awesome. I know this has been a marathon and this is a much longer show than I think any of us anticipated.
It's been the best candidate show you've had, right?
This is the longest candidate show we've had for sure.
Not the best, but the longest.
But it was, but it was important to have. And I think, I thank you guys for none of you walking out saying, I promised you 90 minutes and here you are.
Whoa.
We're, we're cutting.
I thought we sat up for an hour.
I know. I, well.
That's old intermission.
And I'm sorry, I talk a lot.
We gave you, we gave you an intermission, but that was, that was three hours ago. So thank you guys very much for being here. My apologies for, on, on behalf of the show for not getting every contested race on the show this year. We, we started as soon as we felt comfortable and we thought that we could get candidates in the building. I thought it was important to try to do this in person and not over Zoom. Doing this over Zoom, I don't think we'd have the quality of the conversation that we did. So if, if I had five weeks or six weeks, we would have the district 54 contested race in here and we would have the Democrat congressional district six race in here and even the Republican congressional district six. So if I had three more weeks, we'd have three more shows, but unfortunately we, we kind of had to prioritize. And the show historically has tried to work local first. So that's why we had commissioner and council candidates. We had, the, the first two weeks, we had two of the four commissioner candidates on. Everybody was invited, but the way the schedules worked, once again, we got through who we could. And I appreciate all four of the council folks here in this race being on. Three of these are going to make it through to the fall and they were going to pick up at least two more candidates. We're going to do this again in the fall. So this is the, this is what we do in the, in the primary time. And when we get to the fall, we're going to do it again. If you want to vote in this race, you need to be a registered voter in Henry County and you need to pull a Republican ballot. Same thing with the, the two commissioner candidates that you've had. So everybody that you've seen so far is on the Republican ballot. That is where the contested races are in the primary right now. But there are still contested races on the Democrat side as well. So like we said, that congressional district six, there are three candidates running for Congress. So if you want, you, you basically have to prioritize it. If you want to vote for Congress and you want to vote on that side, then you have to pull a Democrat ballot then. If you want to vote in the local races, you need to pull a Republican ballot. Or you can just sit it out, say, I'll catch y'all in November and we'll, we'll vote then.
But if you plan on running next time, vote for the party you plan on running with.
It goes, it goes on your, it goes on your permanent record and it can be weaponized against you. We've seen it used in the past. With that, we thank you all very much. We will be back a week from Thursday with a host only show. We'll see you then.
Thank you for listening to the Boss Hogg of Liberty, which is part of the We Are Libertarians Network. I am Chris Spangle and I'm the founder of this network and I invite you to listen to all of our shows, which you can find at wearelibertarians.com or by searching for these in your pod catcher. The flagship show is the We Are Libertarians podcast where we apply libertarian principles to current events. The Brian Nichols Show is a conversation amongst Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, independents, as they talk about what is happening in the news. And we have many other podcasts like The Chris Spangle Show, Upward, The Cost, Raw Audio Politics, Miranda's World, and Tad Talk, which is quite a ride. So check all of these out. Go to wearelibertarians.com and you can check out all of our great podcasts. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Get our other shows at wearelibertarians.com.